But it will be here with us next time. Just to let you know, the meeting is being recorded by WACA cable TV. And it's especially important tonight for anybody, I imagine a lot of you are here for public comment. So when that happens, please make sure that you do come up to the stand over here and speak into the microphone. And tell us who you are and where you live, and you will be recorded by WACA TV. I'm going to read the order of business this evening. We are going to have our open session, our call to order, our opening procedures, our agenda review and adoption. We will have some time for public comment. And when I finish getting through, reading the agenda, I'll share the guidelines with you for that. The first item on the agenda is the Mendez educational programming. Recommendations from the superintendent for future programming. The superintendent's goals 2019-2020. The approval of new positions in the Warren School and ESP and in the Mendez one ESP. A student travel request, the AHS Model United Nations Club to Toronto, Ontario, April 21st to 25th, 2020. Appointment of the MASC voting delegate and discussing the resolutions. The administrative items include superintendent's report if there is one, assistant superintendent's report if there is one. Warren approvals if we have them. Consent actions approval of minutes, October 23rd, 2019. Acceptance of gifts and donations if we have them. Committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we'll adjourn. So we have a huge crowd tonight, and I hope that we'll be hearing from many of you, if not all of you. You are all welcome to speak. We invited you here for this purpose, and we want to hear what everybody has to say. I received letters, emails from a lot of people in the community. I don't know if there's anybody in this room that has sent an email, but there are plenty of people that sent them that aren't in the room. And we did read all of your emails. Everybody here at this table has read your emails. And I will share with you later the details about, you know, who they were from and what the content was. I'm going to let you speak first. But I wanted to share with you some of the guidelines per, this is per our policy. And it also helps the flow of the meeting. We have a lot of people that probably want to say something tonight. And we want to make sure that everybody can get home for bedtime, but you still get to say what you need to say. So I'm going to read to you generally from the rules of our policy. The committee reserves the right to rearrange its agenda to accommodate scheduled presenters. So tonight you guys are the starting commenters, and we're going to let that go on for as long as it needs to go on. What we ask is that, and per policy, that each person speak no longer than three minutes. So it gives everybody a chance to make their point. If somebody has made your point exactly, I'm not going to tell you, don't still speak because we still want to hear from you and get a sense of where you're coming from. Everybody's welcome to speak. This isn't to shut you down. But if you feel like somebody has accurately made your point and you are comfortable, then that's okay as well. Mrs. Bates is going to give you the little sign when there are about 10 seconds left. And if you can, please try to respect that as carefully as possible. That will allow the person after you to have their opportunity to speak. All citizens shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. So this is a time for you to tell us what you're thinking and feeling and wanting, but it's not an opportunity for questions or discussion. And we won't be interrupting you unless for clarification. Individuals may address topics on the agenda. And we know why most of you are here tonight. If anybody is here to offer public comment on another topic, that's fine as well. Same rules for everybody. And any committee member may direct questions to the speaker through the chair in order to clarify comments of the speaker. So if there's somebody, one of my colleagues that wants more information from you or needs a clarification, they will ask me to get that information from you. So that's generally how it goes. You come up one at a time, introduce yourself, say what you need to say. You might get a stop sign from Mrs. Bates, and then we will go on to the next person, okay? At the end of all this, if you want to stick around, I can share with you who I've heard from and what the gist of all the comments were. And also, you're welcome to stay for our discussion afterwards if there is any, okay? So. Yes, I do want to also let you know that anybody who sent an email, it's been posted. Because there are so many of you here, and I received about 30-some emails at this point. When I left home, it was like 29. By the time I got here, it was maybe it's like 32 or 33 by now, they're still popping in. So every email that has come through has been posted in a file on the district website for you to go and see what your friends and your colleagues and your parents are saying. And anything that continues to come in to me will also be posted in that same place. So what I think I'm going to do tonight, just because of the amount of people here, I'm going to do my best to summarize those who have written in, so you get a clear understanding of what we've been hearing all week. But I think if I read everything word for word, that you might not get home until tomorrow. So that's the gist. Anyone who feels like they want that information can certainly go and look it up on the file. So are my colleagues good with the order of business this evening?
I doubt there is, but if there is anyone who wants to speak on something other than the programming, why don't we ask, give them the opportunity first as opposed to intermingling into a topic like that?
No problem. Is there anybody would like to speak on something other than the Mendez programming this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will ask who wants to be first? Or do you want to go, should we go around the room? Would you like to be first? Come on up. Thank you. Thanks, Kathy. Hi there.
Good evening, hi. I am Erin Drake, and I'm a special education teacher in the neighborhood. I don't live in Ashland, but I live in Holliston.
I'm sorry, Jim.
As the special education teacher in the neighborhood program, I have been able to personally witness the impact that the multi-age program has had on some of our most unique and most often underserved group of learners. Students with disabilities have often spent many years struggling in silence until they can be identified as needing individualized support. For this reason, these students often come to class unable to take academic risks for fear of failure. In a traditional classroom, these students need to build the trust with their classmates and their teacher every year before they will be able to take those risks. I don't often see that with the students I work with in the neighborhood. They know all of their teachers through various neighborhood whole group activities, switching for science and social studies, and many of the other things that we do together as a group. The trust and comfort is established from year one and carries out for the next two. Students with disabilities are like a puzzle that take time and patience to complete. And meeting a new teacher every year means that that teacher must start putting the puzzle together again from scratch. And it takes a significant amount of time to see the student's full and complete picture and how that they learn best. In the multi-age program, we have a unique opportunity with these students. As a special education teacher, I follow these students for their three-year tenure at Mendez. This allows me to get to know them very well on a personal level, and in turn provides me with the knowledge that I need to make lessons more individualized and meaningful without spending precious time every year building rapport. The program doesn't just give me a chance to understand these students, but it also gives all of the teachers in the program that time as well. Working with children and families for three years, you develop a very strong partnership. And we are able to celebrate their student achievements, both great and small, each year. It's one of the most rewarding aspects of my job. It's a profound experience to sit in on conferences and IEP meetings with parents and colleagues to rejoice on the successes and just to talk about how far the student has come in three years' time. While I'm speaking from a special education point tonight, I believe that every student in the neighborhood benefits from this model. And I do believe that it would be a loss for the community if this program were to be phased out. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Mrs. Fandak.
Hi, hi everyone. My name is Sheila Fandak. I am a town resident. This is my 15th year as a neighborhood teacher, and it is a privilege to work with students over a three-year period. I have read Mr. Adams' reasons for why the neighborhood should no longer be an option for Ashland families. And while we can agree to disagree, I believe we should instead be considering why it should stay. Three years is a long time, particularly at this stage in our students' lives. Time is truly, time to truly know each other, to create a family-like bond with our students and their parents, to work on areas that need attention and experience that aha moment the following year. To create an environment where students know they belong and will feel part of something important. A place where there is no anxiety returning to school on the first day because they know what to expect. An ability to hit the ground running on the first day of school because a trusting bond has already been established. All these amazing things happen in a multi-graded classroom, and at the same time, the children are learning all the academic content required, just like every other student in our school. Having an educational choice is not something negative. While it's often not easy, and I can tell you from experience that it's a lot of hard work, the results speak for themselves. Students, families, and teachers all benefit from the richness of the experiences we share and the bonds that develop over three years. Our students value and support those younger than themselves and understand what it means to lead by example. Their time together helps them to be their true selves in a safe environment. Finally, on a personal note, I would like to thank each and every parent who has allowed me to work with their children. This is an important year for me. In June, I will say goodbye to the third child in two different families. Nine years of working with a family has been the most amazing of experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Hello, Mrs. Bannon.
Good evening.
Crash, I'm sorry.
It's okay. My name is Erin Bannon Craschen. And I have been a teacher at Mendez for 20 years, all in the neighborhood. It has been quite difficult for me to decide what I wanted to speak to you about this evening. Teaching is not just a job, it is a passion. It is hard to speak without emotion taking over because this work means so much and has for so long. The neighborhood is not a program in the sense that there is a manual to follow. Our neighborhood is the work of teachers who wanted to provide an innovative experience for students. Mr. Adams shared the original mission statement of the neighborhood. I am thankful that the neighborhood has evolved significantly over the 20 years, as it should. I am so pleased that the instructional methods across Mendez are so similar. Our countless hours of school professional development has allowed all teachers to work together on best practices for elementary school students. We have all learned from one another. At the same time, I feel it is unfortunate that there is more, it is more difficult to incorporate student-led cross-curricular projects that were once so paramount in the neighborhood many years ago. As we discuss the future plans for a new school, one that could allow for larger spaces, outdoor learning labs, and into more integrated technology, I hope we can return to more of that type of hands-on, real-world, real-world learning. But the instructional practices are not what I feel are the most important tenets of the multi-age neighborhood. It is the community, the relationships, and the support between teachers, parents, and students. It is the family that is created based on the shared experiences, not just because of age or grade level. There is a quote, "Childhood is a journey, not a race." My apologies for not having the source. Every child's journey should be unique, meeting his or her individual needs. I have observed countless students who have benefited from working with a teacher for more than one year. Shy students who may need months to feel more comfortable before speaking in front of their peers may become the loudest voice in the room by their third year. A student who may struggle with behaviors or impulse control can have consistent support rather than yearly changes in classroom expectations. Skills may not be mastered by the end of a school year, but can quickly be continued and supported the following year. Just this week, I had three conversations with fifth-grade students reflecting on their growth since third grade. We had authentic conversations about how far they have come, how proud they are of their accomplishments, and they know this to be true because we experienced it together. The relationship extends far beyond three years as well. Students frequently visit as middle schoolers, volunteer in high school, and reach out as they enter adulthood, updating us on the next chapters of their life. Already this year, I've spoken to two graduating seniors about their future plans and received emails from three college students sharing that they are going into education. These relationships matter and are long-lasting. I understand the decisions need to be made with consideration for all, but does that need to happen at the cost of a successful program? If there is success, why not build upon it rather than tear it down? In a world within which diversity should be celebrated, why are we taking a one-size-fits-all approach to our students' education? I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all and to the families who have passed through our halls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Donna Shaw, and I am an Ashland resident. And I've had the esteemed pleasure of being able to work with the staff both at Mendez and at Warren. And I am here to tell you that you could not find a more dedicated, serious, grounded staff in working their heads off and their hearts to meet the needs of the students in their classrooms. To be successful, we also have to take on the understanding that there's never ever going to be enough money to do it right. But you are very fortunate and very lucky to have staff in your classroom that are going to give you the best that they can offer. They are going to care enough about the students to do the best that they can. They're going to work together in community to meet the needs. And one of the things that I would like to caution you with when you go forward as you make your plan is that we reach more student needs by offering variety. And there is a large amount of variety offered to the students in the neighborhood. I've had the opportunity to sub, to work with the kids, and to see firsthand what really goes on in the neighborhood. I'm not a staff member, but I've been in education for 50 years. I've been retired for 10 and still in the classroom as often as I can. And many of those days are with Ashland students. So I ask you to take on the voice of your teachers. They have the heart, they have the soul, they have the desire, they have the knowledge, and they are so, so open to the professional development that you're planning and you're implementing. And I fear, I fear that if you take away the neighborhood, you're eliminating the success of many, many students that would have flourished in the neighborhood had they had the opportunity to thrive in it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for providing us the opportunity to comment tonight. My name is Alexa Fuller. I live in Medford, but I've been a classroom teacher at Mendez for 13 years, 12 of which I've spent in the neighborhood. I'm also one of our building representatives on our district's newly-formed Social Emotional Learning Committee. Socially emotional learning, as Superintendent Adams has made very clear, is one of Ashland Public Schools' major current focuses and priorities. SEL, as we often refer to it, is integral to having healthy, successful students who feel supported, confident, and motivated. SEL is inextricably tied to academic learning. In fact, one of our district's current professional development book groups is centered upon the book called All Learning is Social and Emotional. This book, which is entirely research-based, in more than one instance refers to the importance of students modeling for and mentoring fellow students. A specific example provided of an ideal practice describes a teacher having her students at the end of the school year make videos about certain topics and classroom routines to help the students she will have the following year. It has struck me many times while reading various parts of this book how perfectly aligned with the tenets of SEL our multi-age neighborhood model is. Older students become mentors, and younger students have real-life, in-the-moment tangible role models. Mentorships can certainly happen in a single-graded model, but it is generally believed that cross-age peer mentoring establishes healthier dynamics, where it is often more of an older-younger dichotomy than a same-age but more capable, less capable pairing. Even more than mentors, though, our older students become nurturers and compassionate leaders. And it is here where it is particularly clear that the benefits of a multi-age model go beyond mere mentorship. Over the three years students spend together, they become like family with concrete experiences in navigating close relationships with people older and younger than them, day in and day out. These are skills that prepare them authentically for later life, when they will learn with, work with, and socialize with people of all ages. These are practices and opportunities additionally and significantly that are woven into the very fabric of our neighborhood classrooms. Superintendent Adams outlined at last week's committee meeting how pedagogically the neighborhood model and the traditional single-graded model are at this point virtually identical. I believe this to be true, and I have the utmost respect for my colleagues teaching in single-graded classrooms and the excellent work they are doing. Superintendent Adams went on to explain that the only missing piece was that of mentorship, and therefore, a plan would need to be devised to incorporate that into the single-graded model that he wishes to transition to. With a schedule that is already requiring us to have difficult conversations about cutting into or cutting out core subjects like social studies to make more time for instruction in other subjects such as math, if a very difficult time envisioning how we could possibly build a mentorship model that is as authentic, meaningful, and consistent as the one we already have. Oh, thanks. Sorry, I forgot what that meant.
Do you have a lot, do you have a lot more to say? I want you to finish.
No, just a lay of a sentence. Keeping in mind that we are all here to reflect upon what is truly best for students, I thank you again for your time and consideration.
Hi, my name's Tim Crowley. I'm not an Ashland resident, but I work at Mendez. And I just wanted to say good evening and thank you for listening to everybody here in the community. I think that's really important. Today was my 39th school day as a teacher in the neighborhood program. Prior to this, I was a fourth-grade teacher for six years in our traditional program. In this short time, those 39 days, I've witnessed countless examples of kindness, compassion, helpfulness, and an understanding of others. I want to share just a few quick examples of why it's important. As you know, the students in our district, as well as every district, have a wide range of skills both academically and socially. For one student in particular, in my class, recess, or actually a few students, recess can be very difficult. And a few weeks ago, one of my students from another grade in my class noticed that this student was interested in playing a game with them, but didn't really know how, how to get involved. The older student invited him into the game. He showed him how the rules worked and made sure he got the ball. The act of kindness changed the other boy's recess for, since then. A second anecdote I want to share occurred while I was observing at a PE class. The students were rotating through centers, and at one point, they were told to switch. Two third-grade students began to argue over a ball. At this point, a nearby fifth grader saw what was happening. He went between the two students and calmly de-escalated the situation. The arguing stopped. The boys went on to the next center. And this whole time, while the PE teachers noticed it, they did not have to stop their instruction with another student to intervene. The final example occurred in my classroom two weeks ago. The students were asked to clean their desks. Organization for some of our friends is a major challenge. And while I was working with one student in the classroom ESP was working with another student, I noticed a third-grade student really struggling. They had taken everything out of their desk and were just completely overwhelmed. And at this point, the fourth-grade student sitting next to them stopped what she was doing, immediately started helping. She showed the third grader where the loose papers went, what folder they went into, and how to put everything away so they were accessible. While there are many similar stories I could share, not only in the neighborhood program, but also in the traditional program, I chose these three as they exemplify everything good we want in our students. I also chose these examples because they demonstrate how in the embedded community and family atmosphere of the neighborhood, students are constantly being kind and helpful to their peers. The third graders look up to, and they learn from, the fourth and fifth graders. The fifth graders in turn learn from third graders. Different grades, grade levels interacting in this way is something I didn't find in the traditional model. My point is, eliminating the neighborhood program will also eliminate these powerful interactions. Many students benefit socially from the neighborhood model. And it may not be right for everyone, but eliminating the choice could be detrimental to the social-emotional development of our incredible students who thrive in the neighborhood program. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lavinia Kharthik.
Hi, my name is Lavinia Kharthik. I am a resident here. I have two boys. I don't have an educational background like the teachers that spoke now. So I'm going to talk from a parent perspective. I don't have a speech prepared, so everything here is just ad hoc and coming from my heart. I have two children. One just finished through the neighborhood program and starting middle school this year. And my second one is in the neighborhood program, going in the third grade in the neighborhood program as well. They're both, the first one graduated out of Mrs. Garrettson's class and the second one is in Ms. Garrettson's class as well. And I sent an email to Ms. Garrettson a few days before my third grader, now-to-be-third grader, went into the school saying that I don't have the initial jitters going from Warren to Mendez or having anything to do with the anxiety, the children. Because it was not just about going to a new school, I felt like I'm sending him to his other mom because we've built that trust, we've built that bond with the teacher for the last three years. And not just the Ms. Garrettson, but also the other teachers within the neighborhood program. Build a family, build a community in which all the kids get an exposure to every other teacher within the program. And in those three years, they get to know what everybody is to offer and what the... It's like family. To me, going, sending the school, kids to school, it's not just about education. Kids can learn some things today, some things tomorrow, in a varying speed, varying degree. But for them to be able to create that bond with the teacher and to be able to be there as part, like a family. My sixth grader now was not big on or has never been great with organizational skills. There has been incidents of him leaving bananas in his desk. Ms. Garrettson can talk about that. But in the fifth grade, I actually went to the open house and I sat there and the desk was completely organized. And I looked at her and she gave a nod and she said, "We've come a long way." I don't think a teacher who's had my son for a year can establish that bond with her, with him. And it takes a mom to know, a parent to know, what kind of a bond that works for these kids. And I've seen kids that are in sixth grade, my son's friends, who treat their younger siblings or other siblings or people who don't have, the kids don't have siblings. They know how to be around younger kids. They, and in turn, my kid also knows how to be with older kids. Like my, I have two boys. One doesn't know how to be around older kids, one doesn't know how to be around younger kids. And I feel like this bond helps them to actually nourish mentor. And Ms. Fuller touched on a couple of these things. Having the mentorship is huge. Being able to be a part of the family, I think, is huge. So I don't know, there have been rumors that I've been hearing as to why the program's been taken away. So I don't know what the considerations are. But I would love to know why we want to take away the one element of real niceness within Ashland. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did not ask her to say that.
Is this the second mom?
I'm the second mom. My name is Kira Garrettson and this is my nineteenth year of teaching in the multi-age model, more commonly known as the neighborhood. Last week, there was a recommendation about Mendez moving to a skills-based grouping model as opposed to level-based groupings. And I'd like to clarify how grouping currently works in the neighborhood, as we really do already incorporate the recommended model. First, I'd like to give a few definitions. Groupings are simply ways that students are organized, based on data, into instructional groups so that teachers can most effectively meet the needs of all learners. Flexible grouping is a term used to describe the idea that groupings can change. All models at Mendez use flexible grouping as part of effective instruction. Skills-based grouping is a way of organizing students based on their ability to perform a specific skill. For example, multiplication of two-digit numbers. Level-based grouping is the process of grouping students based on ability across a broader scope of skills. For example, all the multiplication concepts of fourth grade. A frequent misconception is that these two grouping methods cannot be used concurrently. However, when the methods are used together, it provides an opportunity for more effective and comprehensive instruction. This is how groupings in the neighborhood are designed. We employ a level-based grouping first and then use skills-based grouping within that level over the course of the year. These skill-based groupings happen almost every day, with small group remediation, enrichment work, and more. Just within the past week, I've met with at least five different small groups specifically targeting skills that they need. Our philosophy for this grouping model is based on the belief and years of evidence that it allows for a greater continuity and depth in learning. Switching students between teachers and classrooms doesn't necessarily create better instruction. It's just logistics. Simply stated, the more time we spend with our students, the better we can teach them. As veteran educators who have based their careers on how to best teach our children, we believe using skill-based grouping within the leveled grouping is not only possible, but extremely beneficial to both students and teachers. In closing, I would like to say that I do not believe this is a decision about programming. This is a decision that symbolizes our district. As an educator and a parent of children in our schools, I am extraordinarily proud to be part of a district that believes in preparing our students to be a part of the real world, where different approaches to learning are relied on every day. So why not include a model that emphasizes this? Because we are sending our students into a workplace, to citizenship, and into building meaningful relationships in the world. When making your decision, please consider how important our neighborhood is as a symbol for what our district truly stands for.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hi, my name is Diane Bichard. I am an Ashland resident. I had two students out of three go through the neighborhood and only because I had twin girls and I actually think I was the last year that the twins got two separate numbers and only one of mine was drawn. So I'm wondering, actually, if I could take a different tact. I actually, in reviewing what has occurred already in your last meeting and through the different information out on the website, have a few questions. Is it all right to ask questions or?
We really can't answer questions at this point. You can tell us what your questions are and at some later point, we may debate them. We may talk about them in a workshop. You may see us talk about them at the end of this meeting. But we can't respond to questions during this comment period. That's not just geared at you or this situation. That's the rule for every public comment period that we have.
Well, okay, so my first question really was related to the study. When the school district contracted with Dr. Cohen, what was she actually tasked with doing? And then what were you actually expecting as a deliverable? Did she actually deliver what you expected? Because what I was looking at, I found that she was very precise, that she, her program study offered key findings around students' achievement, culture, curriculum, and communication. And then she specifically outlined eleven very specific points and recommendations relating to students based on selection, leadership, and interaction, the curriculum, and then communication on educating the second-grade teachers on the options available for the third graders. So when I looked through her, these eleven points, a lot of them, they were very specific and simple recommendations to implement that she offered. And I guess I want to know if we're, it seems that we're at this road in Mr. Adams' presentation that we're considering getting rid of this program. Are we considering looking at these options and the viability of actually implementing them? And then in addition, talking about a unified building or one united Mendez that is throughout the presentation as well, is it, is it more a physical, the physical separation and limitations of the building that could be causing this? This is very similar to what goes on in the middle school, separate lunches, separate hallways. Is the new building going to be able to change some of that? Or even if we, if we don't get a new building, I guess, then can some of these things be changed? Because there were also recommendations, again, in the study that said, that did not include ending the multi-age programs, but there were specific ways to increase interactions across the school. And again, is this not an option that administration is looking at? And then finally, speaking to the instructional methodology similarities and differences, obviously after ten years and if we're keeping our teachers up to date on teaching practices, I assume that the programs would be getting closer and together. But the innate nature of the multi-age program is embedded. And there's the flexible grouping, collaborative opportunities, cross-classroom collaboration, hands-on project base that happen every day in every classroom. And in the single-age classrooms, these teaching methodologies seem to be currently used sporadically throughout the curriculum and lack the vertical collaboration across grades.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing those concerns, even though we didn't answer your questions right now. Those are, I think, all things that you'll hear us discussing throughout this process. And who's next?
My name is Mira Donalds and I am an Ashland citizen. I just recently graduated from the neighborhood. And I want to say that it was probably the best three years of my schooling that I've ever had. So I really liked the fact that there were different ages in one classroom because you could learn things from the fifth graders, the fifth graders could learn things from the third graders, everything. So that was really good. I also enjoyed the fact that I created a really strong bond with my home-based teacher, Ms. Fiandaca. So I probably wouldn't have gotten to learn as much as I did without the help of all of the teachers. I had seven of the eight teachers in the neighborhood throughout my years at Mendez, which is pretty cool. And I know that it's not a good decision for every family. It doesn't work for everybody, but for the people that it works for, it works really well, at least for me. I enjoyed it a lot. I also liked the fact that in the neighborhood, you were always talking to the other classrooms. And every week, if there was time at the beginning of the week, all the classes would go and sit down in the hallway and we would all have a meeting and discuss birthdays and holidays. And we would nominate academic all-stars and life-skill stars. And I thought that it was kind of like a real neighborhood. Everybody was good friends with each other and we all got to know each other really well. Like, the sixth graders this year, I'm, I know all of the ones from the neighborhood really well. I could say, I could tell you what Victoria's favorite food is. I could tell you what Jane likes to do in her free time. I could tell you so many things about my friends that I don't think I would get to know if we didn't have each other for three years. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. You're very articulate, young lady. We appreciate your feedback. Who's next?
Hi, my name is Victoria. I have recently graduated from the Mendez neighborhood. And it was, in my opinion, one of the best three years of my life. I mean, um, sorry.
It's okay, honey. Just take a deep breath. You're doing great. Yeah. Who was your teacher?
I had Mrs. Aldopoulos through all three years. And she's very nice.
And are you in sixth grade now?
I am in, sorry, I am in sixth grade. But I wouldn't know most of the stuff I know now if it wasn't for the, the neighborhood. All the methods and all the ways the teachers have taught me have really helped me through middle school so far and I'm hoping they'll help me through my future years of schooling. The neighborhood is a really good place to grow and to make friends with the diversity of grades. And yeah, it's a really good place and it's a really good place to make memories, really good memories with really, really nice people. And as I once heard, "The comedian leaves them laughing, but a speaker should leave them thinking." Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did a wonderful job, Victoria. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jane Goss. I'm a sixth grader at the middle school and I'm a former neighborhood student. I'm talking to you on behalf of my entire family, including my brother Peter, who is currently in the fourth grade in the neighborhood program. When I found out that I got into the neighborhood program, I had mixed feelings. I was happy because a ton of my friends were in the neighborhood. I was nervous because there would be fifth graders in my class and I was annoyed because I wouldn't get a locker. Little did I know that being in the neighborhood would be one of the most, the best experiences of my life. One of the things that I enjoyed about the neighborhood was that you were always at the right level. In fifth grade, I was in the advanced level in math and literacy. So I was put in a higher group and I was given work that challenged me. Another thing that I enjoyed was how there were, in my third and fourth grade year, there were fifth graders in my class. And the fifth graders were great role models for me and my fellow students. They gave us tips and tricks on our projects and they answered all the questions that we had. And finally, I loved how we could stay three years with our teachers. Even though that it was like a long time and some people may think that you would get tired of a teacher by then, the bond we had helped us persevere through our time at Mendez. I think that the neighborhood program is amazing and it should continue to help kids through their time at Mendez School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, a wonderful job. Hello there.
My name is Kayla McFarland and I attended the neighborhood program for three years. I'm an Ashland resident and I had such a great experience in the neighborhood program, experience in the neighborhood program. And a big part of that was due to my time as both a mentor and a mentee. This can only be accomplished by third, fourth, and fifth graders in the same classroom every day. I don't want future Ashland students to not have the same experience. I really hope the neighborhood can remain an option for Mendez students. On another note, I never felt separated from my friends in traditional. In fact, my best friend in traditional was in traditional. He is happy with his choice and I'm happy with mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lots of articulate students we have here. Who's next? Who wants to follow those few?
My name is Sarah Kavanaugh and I have three children in the Ashland school system. An eighth grader who went through neighborhood, a third grader who is enrolled in it now, and a first grader. And we've talked a lot about mentorship, about peers. There's something that comes from neighborhood with having a relationship with your teacher over three years that I think is something that we should shift the discussion to talking about how to mirror those relationships through the rest of the school. I'll give you an example. Ms. Anderson was Nate's teacher and Nate had to speak in the fifth grade in front of the class and came running off crying and she called me. And she spent time with him over those three years and in his last year there, so in the third grade he cried. In his last year there, in the fifth grade, he ran for student council and stood up in front of the whole school and spoke. And she called me after that and was like, you know, he did it. It took three years to get him there and we got him there. And that sort of relationship really helps with child, with children's, with their strengths and weaknesses and identifying those. They don't happen over a year when you're in third, fourth, and fifth grade. They happen over time. And I think that was invaluable in our experience. I also think you see it with kids with behavior issues. So when you have a difficult classroom and a teacher is working with those kids over time, they get into a rhythm with those children and they're able to carry that pattern through. And you see those things kind of work their way out. And I think that that's helpful for all students in the classroom, those who are struggling and those who are struggling being around that sort of chaos sometimes. So that said, I can understand wanting to provide an equitable education experience. I think the discussion, you know, should shift to more of taking, how can we expand the things in neighborhood that are working throughout the rest of Mendez? I feel like the discussion and the presentation that went out, quite frankly, feels more about ending the neighborhood program, which is, which is something that I, in talking to Mr. Cairo, I know you don't support, that it's more about pulling the best things from these programs and I think we need to have that conversation. The last thing I would say, I know the transition plan is not coming here today. As a parent of someone in neighborhood, I would ask that the school committee prepare that transition plan. share it with us, and give the neighborhood parents an opportunity to weigh in on that if you move forward with transitioning out neighborhood. I, I feel like that's a critical part of the step and would want to be involved as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name, I probably shouldn't touch that. My name is Sean Adamac. I'm a Ashland resident. I'm a parent of a neighborhood student. I'm also a parent of a traditional student at the same time. And I will tell you that their experiences are not identical. My neighborhood student, I can say definitively, needed a program like this to succeed. Uh, through elementary, Harry struggled because he was often more advanced academically. He has a September birthday. He's the oldest kid in his class. And he got bored easily. And if you know Harry, Harry doesn't do bored. So, his teachers would have him go around and help the other kids when he was done. He would race through his projects and his teachers have him go around and help the other kids, which is great for the other kids. And it kept Harry busy, but it didn't do a whole lot to progress his learning. Then he got to a multi-aged classroom and the world of possibility opened up for him. Uh, he's challenged now, in a good way, because the level of content that he engages with is the right level for him. He's socializing with older kids. In fact, I told him I was coming here today and I said, "What do you like about neighborhood?" And the first thing he said was, "I get role models every day." He's socializing with older kids, not at preordained times or durations a couple of times a week, but all the time, every day. And he's a kid who's always looking for what's next, always excited about the future. And with his neighborhood class, he doesn't have to look far. The future are his classmates. And I, I've never seen Harry so engaged in his schoolwork. I've never seen him so challenged by the content and, and I mean that in a good way. When the Multi-Age Program was launched, it was an innovation. Typically, innovative spaces act like incubators for good ideas. And seatbelts were an innovation, right? Latex paint was an innovation. And in education, twenty years ago, putting kids from three different grades in a single classroom was an innovation. And what happened? It worked. The kids that are in it thrive. We've all seen the data and we have our anecdotes. So, when an innovation works, it spreads. It becomes the status quo. And instead, we're talking about eliminating and moving backwards. For all the challenges that have been noted, with one exception, all of them can be fixed with improvements versus elimination. The inequities can be mitigated with better recruitment practices. The curriculum can be updated and improved. The lack of understanding or, or ability to explain can be improved with better communication. The one challenge that can't be fixed with improvements are the logistics around scheduling. And so, I can't help but wonder, whose interests are we serving by eliminating the program? Is this really about value for the kids or is it a matter of convenience? I really hope it's not the latter. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Next? Anybody? Mrs. Silva? Okay, okay.
Is it okay?
Absolutely. Okay, I'm Kathy Silva. I'm the director. Yeah, uh, Ms. Cherry has a good point. Uh, if Mrs. Silva is going to speak now, I assume that Mr. Kyra is probably going to follow her. So, that would kind of mean the end of public comment. So, I do want to say if there's anybody else that is sitting there thinking that they really want to say something, the time to do it would be before Mrs. Silva. So, is there anybody else that would like to share anything with us? Now's the time. Okay, so I'll, I'll take comment from Mrs. Silva, Mr. Kyra, and then we will turn it back to the school committee.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much for allowing this opportunity. I think the discussion is, is wonderful to have in terms of having people's voices. I wanted to track backwards and remind folks that I came to Ashland Schools in two thousand and eleven. And at that time, I was asked to create an entry plan for what I would be looking towards and what I would be hoping to aspire to do as the Director of Student Services. Part of my entry plan included a poem and the poem is by Ella Wheeler Wilcox, "Tis the Set of the Sail." And I want to read at least a part of it because it is part of what guides me and in my role as the Director of Student Services. Um, there are a couple of stanzas and then it goes on to say, "When ship sails east another west, by the same self-winds that blow, 'tis the set of the sails and not the gales that tells the way to go." Like the winds of the sea are the waves of time as we journey along through life. 'Tis the set of the soul that determines the goal and not the calm or the strife. I think this committee is looking at a time of great passion for looking at how we educate our students and the voices that have been speaking are tremendous. With that said, it pains me to be talking about the fact that the inherent nature of the inequities of the neighborhood bring me in front of you. Um, since I've been here, every year I struggle with the leadership about how to make it an equitable program. Both in terms of the self-selection of who goes into the program, by how we can access resources that support all learners within the program, by the very nature of the population of the students that are in that program in terms of do they really represent our rich environment in our community here in Ashland. We struggle every year and I struggle with people who are committed to making it an equitable program. I know how wonderful the program is. I see it all the time, but it's not equitable. And I struggle with that because my role is to try to create equity. So, for me, I can't envision a way to make it equitable unless we rob a bank, get better resources, make it a true lottery system where you take away its chosen, you know, admission. Um, or you separate it totally out of the public education and create like a Horace Mann School. Like, I get stuck in that way. And I have sat with different building leadership. I have sat with different superintendents. Um, and we have looked at this every year. While the voices have been certainly, you know, very supportive and aligned with, um, a unified voice of how awesome the program is, there are silent voices that have talked about the divisiveness that has been created within the culture of the building. And those voices are silent for a reason. They don't feel comfortable kind of bringing forward what feels uncomfortable to talk about. I'm in a role where I'll engage in a difficult conversation, so I wanted to kind of be that voice and say that that is also part of what is challenging at this point in time. I had one parent talk to me a little bit about how, and she is a parent of a child who recently has gone into middle school, that she never felt like she could make the choice for her child, who is a significant intensively needy student, to be a part of the neighborhood program because she knew that it lacked the ability to meet her child's needs. And no matter how I spun the resources of the district, it was not going to be effective for her child's learning. That crushes me because it is an awesome program, because I would have liked that mother to have said, "Yes, I felt like I had a choice." And yet, she wasn't able to do that and she was being heartfelt in her statement to me. This weighs heavily on me. Um, I, I don't come in front of you lightly. I can hear my voice cracking and it bugs me that I can't keep it controlled. It just, the reality is I have to be a voice of saying the equity isn't there. Um, I've struggled with it since two thousand and eleven. Before I arrived, there was no equity. People weren't paying attention to it. I was horrified privately that people were turned away from consideration because their children had educational needs or were unique learners. That has since changed, certainly. And there's a strong emphasis to try to make it work. Erin Drake's work within the program and the entire staff with their sensitivity to unique learners is certainly there and I'm not questioning that whatsoever. The resources are hard to parse out into two different programs. That's a reality. So, I'm aware and I'm also very grateful that the school committee is taking on looking at this. Um, I think it shows a consistent willingness to set the sails, to really think about what is it that is our mission in public education and how do we do right by the tremendous assets that we have here with our young students and the challenges that we face in trying to make it work. So, I appreciate very much that you're talking about this and that you've given me the time to share my thoughts.
Thanks, Kathy. Mr. Kyra? Dr. Kyra?
Eight years ago, I didn't need these glasses. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts this evening. Twenty years ago, a group of talented educational professionals set out to make a difference at the Mendez Elementary School. Armed with the toolbox of innovative practices and instructional techniques, these educators created what has now become known as the Multi-Age Neighborhood Program. The original mission of this program states in part, "The neighborhood school seeks to provide a nurturing environment in which to develop the talents of the learners. As a community, we learn from each other and about each other." For twenty years, this program has provided students with an opportunity to grow and learn from many skilled educators. As the principal of the Mendez Elementary School, I have seen firsthand the wonderful work and the many great qualities of the program. Moreover, as a twenty-year educator, I have witnessed a transformation in education. Whereas the neighborhood program was once a programming model infused with innovative educational practices, it is now an example of a program that consists of many different teaching models that occur within the context of the Mendez Elementary School. Due to this evolution in education here at Mendez, the differences that set the neighborhood apart from the previously deemed traditional program twenty years ago are now minimal. Serving in the capacity of building principle has provided me the opportunity to develop a unique perspective on this issue. Four years ago, when I took this position, I met with members of the staff and I had conversations regarding their thoughts, wishes, and concerns about Mendez. Nearly everyone I met with shared with me their opinions on the disparity between the two programs. Most importantly, a great majority of teachers talked about the unsaid divide. For many, it is a true elephant in the room. In private, it is easy to have these conversations. It is difficult, however, to have these conversations publicly. If I have learned one thing about our staff, it is that they are fiercely loyal to one another and they would never say anything disparaging or anything that would potentially hurt one of their colleagues. I would expect nothing less from them and I appreciate this loyalty to one another. I am lucky to work with passionate educators who genuinely like each other. In fact, while I heard about the disparities in programming, I also heard from each teacher about the relationships and the loyalty they felt for their Mendez family. Both of these sentiments were heard loud and clear. Another point that was made clear is that several teachers, while they considered all colleagues to be collegial, yearned for a more united school. In my initial professional development meeting with staff, we discussed the inherent differences between collegiality and collaboration. There was much talk of a wish for more collaboration. There was a talk of a wish for one united Mendez. In many ways, I feel I have failed to provide this for our students and staff. We have attempted to make changes and we have tried to incorporate ways to join the two communities together, but there remains a divide. Some may say that I tried to strip the neighborhood of their identity when I stopped referring to it as the neighborhood and began referring to it as the multi-grade or multi-age program. While this may resonate with some as a slight to a beloved program, it was never intended to be that way. Rather, this change was made as a result of conversations with our staff. While some may think it is no big deal to have a name attached to your program such as "traditional", our so-called "traditional" teachers took great homage to being cast in this light. Changing the way we refer to our programs was never intended as a slight to the neighborhood. It was an attempt to show that our single-graded teachers also have great skills and there is nothing traditional about them. Eliminating nicknames was intentional and was done as a step to bring our school closer together as one community, both within the school and in the greater Ashland community. Additionally, I began saying the phrase, "We are Mendez," even going as far as making staff T-shirts with the saying on the back. This sentiment grew out of the initial interviews as once again, it was my intent to bring together a community of teachers, a community of students, a community of learners. It was never my intent to create a divide. Rather, it has always been and remains to be my intention to help create a more unified school. I am in full support of the proposal and recommendation by Superintendent Adams as the intent is to create a unified Mendez. As an educator, there are many things I feel passionate about. I am passionate about social-emotional learning. I am passionate about student engagement and relationship building. Our Multi-Age Program offers the best of all of these things. Our single-age classrooms offer the best of all of these passions as well. I believe we can take many of the lessons learned from our multi-grade program, incorporate them with the many great lessons we have learned from our single-grade program, and create a new, innovative, educational environment that is equitable for all students. It will be difficult to replicate some of the unique opportunities children are provided in the Multi-Age Program. It is not my intention, nor should it be anyone's intention, to replicate anything. Instead, it should be our intention to take some of the great qualities of all programming and create a new one. We can incorporate many of the wonderful experiences offered by the teachers to our entire school. Many of you know I have another passion. I am passionate about equity in education. Eight years ago, when I was hired as the principal of the Warren Elementary School, I was struck by a severe inequity in the Ashland public schools. I made it a mission of mine to help bring free, full-day kindergarten to our public school system. Thanks to creative budgeting, a superintendent who shares my same passion for equity, parent involvement in a supportive school committee, this dream became a reality. I'm quote, "Proud to say I played a very small role in the process and proud of our school district for seeing a gross inequity and making a change for the better." Four years ago, when I was hired as the principal of the Mendez Elementary School, I began to look at some data regarding the student population in the neighborhood program. Once again, it struck me that there were some inequities in our school district. I have, in my opinion, a moral and ethical obligation to stand by my convictions and when I see an inequity in education, it is my job to stand up, recognize it, and help create a change for the better. When Mr. Adams approved the Mendez Program Study Committee to look at our school's distinct programs, we found that there was not an equitable distribution of student population between the two programs. In fact, we found a grossly disproportionate number of students who receive English learner services in the single grade as opposed to the neighborhood program. This is only one of the inequities and it is not a problem that is fixed easily. Certainly, some will say we can implement small changes to help the programs become more equitable. My opinion is that the problem is too large. And once in a while, leaders need to make difficult decisions. Part of the reason I love my job is that it is my responsibility to make difficult decisions. And in this case, I believe a wholesale change needs to occur. I believe our current system is broken and when it is broken, it's our job to fix it. Those in opposition of the superintendent's recommendation may argue the reason the administration would like to move forward with this recommendation is because it is hard to have two distinct programs in the building. Part of that statement is absolutely true. It is incredibly difficult to have two distinct programs in the building. Logistically, it is difficult to schedule to ensure all students are treated equally. Logistically, it is difficult to maintain the budget of the two distinct programs to ensure all students are treated equally. But to think that is why we would make a decision is short-sighted. In fact, if the multi-grade program is no longer in existence, our entire schedule will need to be recreated. Scheduling nine to ten single-graded classrooms is far more challenging than scheduling our current situation. But that is not why I, as the principal, am worried about and nor what am I concerned with. Again, my goal is to create an educational environment that is equitable for all. While I acknowledge the great teaching, the historical success, and the many people who are passionate in their love of this program, I do not feel I am doing my job if I do not try to change and unjust inequity in our system. I am confident that the great majority of educators and parents, even those who disagree with me regarding Superintendent Adams' recommendation, would want anything less than equitable opportunities for our young learners. I believe it is our charge and it is our obligation to provide everyone with an education that is focused on equity. In my opinion, the continuation of a self-selecting program does the exact opposite. Instead, as I stated earlier, we need to consider how we can provide better opportunities for all students by developing a new plan for Mendez that infuses the best of what our school by developing a new plan for Mendez that infuses the best of what our school currently offers throughout the entire building. Many individuals who have spoken to me in opposition to the superintendent's recommendation and tonight have suggested that relationships are better developed in the Multi-Age Program due to the consistency of adults in the lives of students over the course of three years. I too believe there is value in having a consistent adult in a child's educational life for consecutive years. I also believe a child can have a life-changing experience with an educator after only one year. Most importantly, I believe it is the responsibility of all adults throughout the entire school to ensure that each child has a positive adult in their educational life. Last year, our counselors asked students to answer two questions as part of a professional goal. Students were asked to answer yes or no to the following. One, I feel comfortable going to my classroom teacher if I have a problem or need to talk to someone. Two, is there another adult in the building besides your classroom teacher who you can go to if you have a problem or need to talk to someone? Of the six hundred thirty-six students in our building last year, forty-three students answered no to both questions in the spring of 2019. As an educator who places an emphasis on SEL and relationship with building with students, it was difficult to swallow the fact that nearly seven percent of our student population did not feel they had a trusted adult among our staff. Of the forty-three students, we have a breakdown of students who answered no to both questions by grade level and specific program. Twenty-nine of four hundred fifty-three students from the Single-Grade population answered no to both. This is approximately six percent of the Single-Grade population. Among these students, four percent were third graders, six percent were fourth graders, and eight percent of our fifth graders from the Single-Grade answered no to both questions. Fourteen of one hundred eighty-four students from the Multi-Grade population answered no to both. This is approximately eight percent of the Multi-Grade population, a minimal two percent more than Single-Grade. Of these students, five percent were in Grade Three, nine percent in Grade Four, and seven percent in Grade Five. I find this particular data interesting, mainly because a major point of contention of those opposed to our restructuring revolves around the relationship building in the Multi-Grade. I don't bring this data to diminish the successes of either program. Instead, I want to call attention to the similarities in the data provided. In both instances, we failed to reach students, and the percentages are staggeringly similar. On the other hand, I think it is important to see that in all cases, whether Multi-Grade or Single-Grade, more than ninety percent of our students have a trusted adult in our building. Even with this data, I continue to believe it is important to consider the value in teacher-student relationships that move beyond a single year. We attempt to do this with special education teachers and guidance staff when possible. Personally, I have reaped the benefits of remaining with our current fifth graders for five of their six years in the Ashland Public Schools. We need to take this consistency into consideration as we develop a new plan. It is difficult to stand here today and have this conversation, as I believe the Multi-Grade Neighborhood has done amazing things for a great many students. I simply think it is time to see how we, as an entire unified school, can do better. I think it starts with the acknowledgement that there is a problem. And like I say to my staff, if you find a problem, it is necessary to be part of a solution. Ultimately, I hope our community will stand with Mr. Adams and I and have the courage and forward-thinking to say we can be better. The idea of combining the best of two successful entities should excite us rather than divide us. My hope is that twenty years from now, folks are asking difficult questions about decisions we made today. Twenty years is a long time. A lot can change, and change for many is frightening. I venture to guess that twenty years ago, people were probably questioning whether or not the introduction of a Multi-Grade Neighborhood option would be effective. I imagine folks were standing up in front of a school committee in opposition of a different way of doing things. I do not believe we should continue to do things just because it is the way we have been doing them. And I do believe we need to take a stand if we discover inequity. My belief is that Ashland is and will continue to be an innovative school district, a school district that takes risks. I would agree that those who introduced the Multi-Grade model to our district twenty years ago were risk-takers. It is time for us to take a risk and try something new. I am proud to say, over the course of the last four years, members of our teaching staff are trying new strategies and taking risks. I applaud and fully support our teachers who have taken these risks and are stepping out of their comfort zones to incorporate thoughtful switching and teaming, skills-based grouping, and team teaching methods while utilizing assessment measures to drive instructional practices. But as an entire school, we can do better. Many of these strategies are in their infancy stages, and many times educators need the freedom to take risks and learn from mistakes rather than fear failure and halt their risk-taking. I am proud that we have provided our teachers the opportunity to do so. I am excited to have an opportunity to have our Multi-Grade teachers and our Single-Grade teachers collaborate to develop a plan for what a new Mendez looks like. During the summer, you all asked me what my ideal elementary school would look like. Certainly a loaded question. But to answer in brief, I believe in the importance of a community of learners dedicated to the social-emotional well-being of all that consistently teaches the whole child. I believe in skills-based flexible groupings and collaboration. I acknowledge the importance of database decision-making and ensuring that "all" means "all" in every aspect of our school. Certainly, there is much more to add, such as robust and balanced literacy instruction, interdisciplinary lessons, technology infusion, and attention to 21st century skills to ensure the future successes of all students. All of these attributes in a school are very important to me. But this is about much more than what I envision and what I want. Should you decide to approve the recommendation on November thirteenth, I recommend an opportunity to work with all staff to create an appropriate transition plan. While Mr. Adams and I have discussed a plan, it has not included input from Mendez educators, and their input is critical. Our teachers play a pivotal role in the future of Mendez. We need our teachers to be involved in the development of a new educational vision for our students and staff. I would like the time to meet with our staff and have conversations around how we can embed peer mentoring and modeling opportunities for all students. Perhaps, we can adopt an advisory block in which students from all grade levels are assigned a staff member for their three-year term at Mendez. The adoption of such a block could also provide opportunities for collaboration and mentorship while forging adult-student relationships for an extended period of time. I hope we can continue to foster an environment that encourages horizontal collaboration through the use of common planning time and professional learning-community-style meetings. Collaboration should become a common practice. Our Multi-Grade teachers are experts in this area, and we need to tap this expertise to improve our horizontal collaboration as well as our vertical collaboration. As stated earlier, I hope to develop an environment wherein our teachers work together in teams to form flexible skill-based groupings of students while remaining malleable in our thinking to understand this might not work best for all. Perhaps, we need to rethink the organizational layout of our building to assist with this process, understanding that teacher-student classroom proximity matters. We will remain inclusive in our efforts to ensure students, no matter their ability level, ethnicity, race, religion, socioeconomic class, gender, or sexual orientation are treated respectfully and taught in a culturally proficient and equity-oriented environment. I believe we can do all of this and so much more. But we need the time to develop this plan, and we need the support of our staff and all community members to make this new vision a successful reality. It goes without saying that the accomplishments of a program should never be overlooked. But to say something cannot change or evolve, in my opinion, does not represent the growth mindset. I appreciate all of the folks who had the courage to stand up and speak tonight, especially our Mendez students, our former Mendez students. And I appreciate that many have differing views than mine. What I hope we can acknowledge is that due to Mr. Adams' recommendation, we have an opportunity to create a new Mendez educational philosophy. And with this new opportunity comes great responsibility. I personally take that responsibility seriously. I am open to new ideas. I did not become an educator because I believe there is only one way to do things. I believe in taking the best of what we have to offer and forging a new path. I feel strongly that we can take the qualities and mission of the original intention of our Multi-Grade programming and combine it with the best of our Single-Grade programming to provide all students an opportunity to learn in a school that is equitable and unified. That is my goal. I hope the community will support that goal. I hope our teachers will support that goal. I hope the school committee will support that goal. I am proud to stand with Jim Adams, who I know will support that goal. In my opinion, our superintendent's recommendation to move forward to create an equitable and unified Mendez is what is best for children. I hope no matter the outcome of the vote on November thirteenth, our community, both inside the walls of Mendez and throughout Ashland, remains united. My hope is our teachers band together and remain loyal to one another and loyal to our students, for that is what matters the most. I know, no matter what, we will continue to work for all children and abide by our school's core values. We will continue to be safe, work together as a team, always be kind, responsible, and show respect. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you for listening, and most of all, thank you for caring.
Thanks, Mike. So, before I open it up to discussion, I do want to acknowledge all of the people that took the time to write to the school committee. And some of the letters were really detailed. People did research, and I really appreciate all of the very thoughtful input. A lot of the letters mentioned things that, a lot of the things that we heard here this evening. There are a lot of themes about how wonderful the Neighborhood has been, and I'll share with you some of the comments. I've got some input on folks who are looking for more unity in the building and more equity in the program. And I heard from a lot of kids, mostly kids actually, who just absolutely loved their experience, including my own. Loved the experiences in all of the programs. So, I want to honor the time that those folks put into this and let you know who they were and give you a flavor for some of the comments. And as we said at the beginning of the meeting, anybody who wants to dig in a little deeper, they will be available. It's just not possible to really have a meaningful discussion here if I read every word of every letter, but they will be available. So, I received about thirty emails and plus, because some were coming in as I left my house while I was driving after I got here. And they're not going to be included in these numbers, so even as of right now, they're not entirely accurate, but they're pretty close. So, I received the majority of input from former Neighborhood students. That's where most of the input came from. About thirteen students wrote to me, some just very briefly saying, "I loved my experience", and some much more detailed, saying things like it was the best part of their time in Ashland. They liked the projects, they liked the leveling, it gave them confidence, it gave them public speaking experience. They wouldn't change anything, they met a lot of friends, they had a lot of experience dealing with kids of different ages and found that very beneficial. They had fun, they felt safe. Again, a lot of the things that we heard from our wonderful students this evening. You have a lot of students who share your opinion, and they let us know, and I appreciate that. We also heard from their parents, a lot of the students that wrote, their parents wrote, and also other former parents of Neighborhood students. And I would say I received about six emails from former, just former Neighborhood parents. There are some parents that would fit into the category of I had one in Traditional and one in the Neighborhood, so there were a few of those. Six former Neighborhood parents. There were two parents that I heard from that have students currently in Mendez. And I heard from one teacher, two teachers actually, one who is, was a Neighborhood teacher. And I heard from another teacher as well, and I heard from someone else who's, I heard from two people who are teachers in other districts who had something just to say about their perspective being educators. And finally, I only heard from one parent, who's a parent of a first grader. I actually only heard from one person who would actually be affected by any decision that we're making. Person meaning student and parent, not, of course, the folks that work in the building. And that would be one person there. So, I'm just, again, going to go through a few of the highlights. There was a very thoughtful email written about us making sure that we connect whatever we do back to the mission of our organization and our vision. And there were a couple of questions about the study and what it meant and how it was done and how we interpret it. Looking for best practices and maybe suggestions about looking into what other model districts are doing. There, the majority of the emails that I got, the overwhelming majority, were all in favor of saving the Neighborhood Program. Some of the subject lines were "save the Neighborhood". And I would say that I, at least as of the last count, I had three emails for folks saying that they supported the recommendation of the superintendent for various reasons, as I said, either equity or unity or both. Again, bonding with students, a lot of this is really repetitive, so I'll let you go back and read it. The mentoring was a big thing, and there was discussion about the natural way that things happen in the Neighborhood just without having to like plan mentoring time, it's just sort of built into the situation. Some of you wrote to me who already spoke this evening, so I won't, I won't go into that. Switching classes was a benefit that came up a lot, the leveling. And as far as the, and leadership qualities as well. So, those are all the things that I think we also heard here this evening, and there was nothing really new, but certainly a lot of affirming everything that we have already heard. In the, in support of Mr. Adams' proposal, their, big concern was the division, the lack of unity in the building. And a parent described, actually, this is a parent who had three kids go through the Traditional Program, has been in the district for a really long time and either holds a role in AshPAC or has in the past. So, but described the Neighborhood Program as her understanding was that it was created for gifted kids. So, you know, that's the impression of a parent that wrote to me, supporting the recommendation, really stressing that unity in the building is needed. Another person who has a child in Mendez and one who's coming into Mendez, who's an educator in another district, saying that they're looking forward to the time when it will be one united Mendez. There was somebody that, who wrote me a very detailed email with research about disparity, about how public education is supposed to offer a fair and equal opportunity for education, and quoted the non-discrimination policy as well as some articles about making sure that we provide equal opportunities to everybody and some of the ways that we may not be doing that, and in some of the ways where that might be difficult for a child who is looking for more diversity, feeling like that's, could be a program where they wouldn't belong just based on how it's looking. And also had some concerns about, and I know this came up in the study, some issues about maybe the field trips not being equal in both programs and whether or not that's an issue for students who can't afford the bill for the field trip. I know there are other ways to, but that was the concern of this particular parent. Asking us to very seriously consider making sure that we celebrate differences and provide for, provide fair opportunities and equity and ensure a diverse educational environment. And then, the final email that we received, this is one who wrote about, her children were in looping, so before the Neighborhood, or actually, around the same time maybe the Neighborhood was created, there was a third option called looping. So, this parent had. So, looping, and I might not do the best job describing like the educational, but I believe it was two years instead of three years. So, you stayed with the same teacher for two years, and perhaps there were like, were there two classrooms that kind of? No, it was one classroom, two years instead of three. And you stayed with that same teacher for the, and it got, it didn't last for very long. Is that correct? A few years? Five years? Couple of years? Yeah. So, so this parent used that option, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because, and So, so this parent used that option, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because, and her, her experience was not the neighborhood or traditional, but in, in her opinion, she said she started paying attention to the equity and opportunity gaps in our schools. Not just for my own children, but in grades three to five, but every minute, every hour, every day for every student. We understood the benefit of multi-age, but our community's demographics have changed so much, so fast. And I worry that all, not all families can readily understand. And there was a tremendous benefit to looping, which no longer exists. They had an excellent public school education in Ashland, but there are certainly features they didn't get to experience because they weren't in the other programs. And then, the final point, there are community members who are concerned that something treasured is being hastily dispensed of, that, or that the inconsistent promotion or explanations of options are really the issue. Listened and take into consideration the perspectives, and glad others have had a great experience, but Superintendent Adams' recommendation to phase out the multi-age problem, program is carefully researched and well thought out, and should the committee vote to accept it, will change the story in a positive way. Every minute, every hour, every day for every Mendez student. So, that's basically the gist of, of the variety of input that I got and, and the percentage of, of who said what. I assume that there will be more, and we will continue to update you on that, and you'll be able to go look at it. And I'm happy also to answer any of your questions about, if you have any, you all read the emails, so if there's something that you remembered from the emails that I did not address this evening and you feel it's worth mentioning tonight, please do that. Otherwise, I'm gonna open it up to discussion from the committee.
I think you accurately summarized the emails that I've, I've read. I know, I, I think everybody has read every single one of them thoroughly.
Yeah, I read them all.
So, definitely appreciate everyone's input, both in the emails, whether it be Facebook tonight. You know, I really appreciate those who took the time, not only to say, "Hey, I love it," but why, right? Because regardless of, of what, what decisions are made, that's important to say what you did like, what was it valuable to you, to articulate that as, and taking the time to do that. We definitely appreciate it. We did hear a lot about also the concerns that, that you shared as well about the plan not being thought out. And I was gonna mention it, but Mike had mentioned it as well, that that has to come next because it can't be, if, if, if Jim had presented that, honestly, we would've said, "How the heck can you have that without, you know, the educators being a part of that?" That, so that is coming next, and, and I understand the desire to have it, but it, it wouldn't have been as well thought out and, and, and well done without the, the teachers being part of that, should that be needed soon.
So, at this point, Lori, are you looking to have some discussion about how we proceed from here, or about feedback in general?
I think both, I think it's whatever, I mean, I, I don't know if any of you understand that we're not voting on anything this evening, so we're not gonna be reaching any decisions. So, this is an opportunity for, for either one of, or both of those things. Any feedback that you have, and I'll start, I guess, and then we can see where the discuss, because this, this is the one thing that I want to say at this point, because we're not voting, and there's still a lot of discussion that needs to happen. And I don't know how many discussions we're gonna have moving forward. I'm sure that the teachers and administrators will be doing a lot of talking that we won't be part of, and we'll be looking to them to come back and, you know, and I, I trust them and their feedback, and I'll be looking forward to hearing it. But I do want to, because I, I know this might be hard to believe, but we almost never have anybody here with us. We almost never have an audience here, so I really want to take advantage of the fact that you're all here, and maybe there are people watching, to just share just a little bit of my own perspective and at least what I'm bringing to any decision that I might make after hearing you and, and reading your emails and having my own experience in this district for a really long time. And, you know, I don't know what that means to anybody, but I feel like I want to share it. And I also was looking around the room to see if there was maybe anybody else here when, I, I know a couple of the teachers, but I don't know about any of the parents. I'm feeling like a dinosaur right now, because I was here when the neighborhood was first created, and there was all the discussion about whether or not we would do it, and at the time, it did seem so innovative and new and exciting. And my niece and my nephew were in the very first class. And my son, my oldest son, would have gone to the next year, except he ended up going to private school. And so, I was here for the beginning, there was a lot of enthusiasm, it was a wonderful program. My second son did not get into the neighborhood, I wanted him to, but he didn't get in. So, he went to traditional, and I have to be honest, I was really disappointed. And the truth is, now that he's way at the other end of it, he's twenty-five years old, that was the best year that he had in the entire time that he was in Ashland. As well, my girls who were in the neighborhood would say the same thing about their experience. They had an amazing experience, they would agree with everything that's been said here. I would agree with everything, you know, that, that's been said about, about the teachers and about the program. And, and again, my oldest child is, he went to private school during those years, and he too would say that, you know, those were the best years of his life. So, and they, guess what, like, they all turned out okay, at least like so far. You know, they, they all have a lot of the qualities that, that you're describing as far as being able to, you know, I was gonna say talk to adults, but they actually are adults. They're in their twenties, and, you know, one of them's already done, he's an attorney, and the other three are in college, and they, they all got in where they wanted, they're all doing great, and they all have really fond memories of the different things that they did. So, I, I, I feel like I'm not, you know, I'm coming feeling like there are a lot of factors that go into what helps you develop a, the kind of student and child that, that we all want, right? And I also sat on the committee that studied this for a long time. And so, I heard, I listened to everything that everybody had to say, I went in really open-minded, I participated in every, just about every single meeting, as did Dr. Vera. I did come out concerned about the equity piece of it. And then, I guess the last thing I just want everybody to know, and I, I just feel like I need to say this just in case that there's any question, because there've been some comments in the emails and maybe even tonight about like, why would we step back? And, and whatever happens, I just want to assure everybody that there is not anybody sitting at this table that has any intention of whatever we feel is the right thing to do, and I'm not exactly sure what that looks like yet. But there's not a single person here, I guess maybe I should just speak for myself, I would never vote for anything that, at least I consider to step back, backwards. It might be change, it might be difficult, I'm not sure how it's gonna look, but it's just, there's our experience that we had while we were there doing our thing, and I think it's our, then there's our duty as school committee members. We're here, that we're supposed to provide the top, absolute best education and experience for all students. And that's the only thing that, that's the thing that we're doing, the only thing that we're doing or trying to do. So, none of us are attached to a particular outcome, we're not trying to water anything down. We're not doing anything other than to try to give our own kids, you know, what we want to give your kids. The rest of my friends here still have kids in the system and some in the schools. So, I mean, I don't know if it gives you any assurance or not, but at least I feel like I want to say that the intention is only to make a decision that makes Ashland better and moving forward and the very best that we can be. So, that's really all I have to say at this moment, but I want to open it up to you guys to, to share your thoughts or feedback.
So, I, I'll, I guess I'll, I'll share Lori's thoughts in terms of what our ultimate goal is, which is to do the best for the kids of Ashland. Since we're sort of disclosing, disclosing biases, I'll say, both of my kids went through the neighborhood program. One of them had three great years with Ms. Van Daken back there. And, you know, to Lori's point, we, we had a lot of discussion over the summer. We had a couple of workshop meetings, probably spent, it might've been four or five hours just talking through this. And we heard a fair amount of what Mr. Kyra shared tonight. And it has been, to our benefit to have heard that beforehand, I think when we talked last week, there was a natural desire not to share some of that, and I think you can understand why, having heard about some of the concerns within the building. What I, I guess I would say is that the challenge that we ultimately left with to Mr. Adams, Mr. Vera, Mr. Kyra, was not to look at the report or where we moved as a function of, are we gonna be a single age program or a multi-age program? It was, we have a tremendous opportunity, potentially with a new building coming, what's the best program? It could be continuing with the status quo, it could be one or the other, it could be something that we haven't yet envisioned. But that was the challenge that, that I think the committee reiterated a number of times, was don't be confined by what we're doing right now. Think about what the right thing to do is for our kids. And I think that's what we're really still aiming for. I'm gonna hold off on comment about sort of where I think we are right now for now. But I really want people to understand the context of what we've heard before and really what the charge has been to, call them formally, because there's people in the room, to Jim, Paul, Mike. And I really appreciate, Mike, your candor tonight and, and your willingness to talk about some of the things that you wanted to share with us in a workshop session when we're not on camera, and shared with us over the summer to give us a sense of this. You know, I think, sorry, people didn't get to hear that last week, and I think it's important for people to have a full understanding of what the dialogue has been, to hear what you shared tonight. So, I want to thank you for that. So, I'll stop for now, and that's down to Kathy.
Well, I think you both have captured it. I mean, it is, it's a, it's a difficult kinda, but it's an opportunity, like you said. All three of my kids went through the, through the neighborhood, and hearing everything tonight, you know, reminded me, reminds me again of why I wanted them in that program. So, I do hope, as we're moving forward and coming up, you are devising a new way forward, that you will take all of that, everything you've heard tonight and what you've been hearing, you know, into consideration for the plan, for the transition, so.
Yeah, and so, I'll also share that I know several of the teachers sitting back there for lots of different reasons. I've had a kid in both programs, and both have had great experiences. And, you know, the, the one that's in the neighborhood right now really appreciates a lot of the things that people have been saying about the multi-age. He enjoys that. And I, I, I want to echo what Mr. Kyra said, what some of the others have said, that this is, this isn't about removing anything, it's not, it's not about that at all. It's, it's really, you know, we're, we're taking and not doing either thing the same way in the future. And we really need to think of this as an opportunity to say, how can we, you know, progress and do it even better? And for a program that's innovative, something I've said to a couple of people, I don't see a, a program that's innovative having to be locked into being delivered in a way that was decided twenty years ago. We can take all the goodness, and, and maybe it's delivered, you know, very similarly. I don't know what that answer is, I'm, I'm not the educators. And like I just reiterated, I respect the heck out of our administrators, but if they came to, to me with a plan that didn't include the edu, the, the, the teachers in the, in the classrooms, that would, that wouldn't be a, you know, that, that's doomed to fail. Even just from a inclusion perspective, even if they echoed exactly what they said and they loved it, that, that process needs to take place. And so, it, it, it's, it'll be interesting to, to, to hear that going forward. And I definitely appreciate everyone's abilities to articulate what they, what they've shared. I will echo some of what Kathy had mentioned, that it is difficult for some people to have a voice that, that doesn't, doesn't reflect all the positive things. And I've had many of those conversations as well. And just because they're not willing to come up here doesn't mean that that's not happening, and those things need to be. It hurts, it hurts me to hear those things that, that might be going on, or it might be feelings, whether they're real or perceived, if they're perceived, they're, they're impacting our, our kids and our educators. And so, you know, I, I really look at this as an opportunity to make sure we can, we can do the best for the district, the educators, and, and I think bringing it together, being unified, having more, you know, universal collaboration across the building should be, you know, everyone's goal. And, and, so, I'll, I'll leave it at that. But know that everyone up here has experience with, with the program, you know, and I have experience with both, and, and so does our member that's, that's not here with us tonight. But I, I do appreciate everyone coming out, caring so much about the program, the kids, and that's why we're all up here. And, and we do, definitely appreciate it.
So, if I, if I can, Lori, I mean, I think the, the, the plan had been, and this has been communicated by Mr. Adams to the community at large, that we would have, we had last week's meeting, this week's meeting, and that we would be looking to have a vote next, in November, middle of November. And, I mean, I guess I'll say for myself and having, sort of coming back to the theme I picked up on before, which is, you know, the goal really was to come with the next thing. And while I appreciate much of what Mike has said in terms of what will be integrated into that, I honestly don't feel like I have a plan. I have, I want, I want to be able to vote for the future, rather than feel like I'm voting against, you know, the continuation of a program, meaning the neighborhood in this case. And so, while I, I don't want to leave the public thinking that I'm kind of waffling on what I think that might be for me personally, I, I also think it's, it is premature for us to vote on sort of the elimination of something without knowing what the next thing is gonna be and, and how we're gonna do that. And so, you know, I certainly want to, I don't want, Mr. Kyra, I don't want you or Jim or Paul to hear that and think that I'm not supportive of what you're trying to accomplish, because you've identified, the report has identified, you've talked about, Kathy's talked a lot about, about some really important issues. And I think those issues have to be addressed to create an equitable experience for our students. But I also think to, to sort of take a vote before we sort of see what that looks like is a bit premature to me. And I think to the community, to be fair to everybody, to have a sense of, quite frankly, to, to enjoy the excitement that I think you have for this opportunity, I know you do, from our conversation over the summer. I do. You know, I think it's a unique and exciting opportunity that we have, because we're gonna be potentially building or rebuilding a building around a program to really make everything work well together. And for our building that has struggled academically the most, if you look at test scores for a long time, the opportunity to bring all those things together, I think, is generational in nature. So, you know, I want to continue to encourage you to, you know, to come up with whatever that is. And again, I know you've outlined some basic parameters, and I really look forward to supporting what the plan is. But right now, you know, I, I do feel like we're talking more about, hey, we have a problem with a particular program, let's stop doing that. And that's not, that's not what I feel like we really asked to, to, to do. I think we really talked about, let's talk about the future of the program and let's look at that. So, I think it's important for you to know that I'm personally, you know, supportive of changes that make the program better, whatever they might be. And if better is status quo, that's okay, but I think we've certainly heard from you quite clearly that probably is not the case. So, I just want to put that out there so that, you know, if we don't take a vote or if we delay a vote, the community isn't sitting there going, "What's going on?" And, and kind of, everything's happening behind the scenes, and all of a sudden, something pops up three months from now. But I also don't want you to walk out of this thinking you don't have, at least my support, I can't speak for the other committee members, in terms of trying to find that next best Mendez that brings the, the entire community together.
So, Mark, just do want to clarify with you. I, I do think that we need to make a decision to allow that next step of the process to occur, though. You're not talking about delaying that until there's a finite plan in place, because that, that, you know, we, we do need to say we are moving forward or not, you know, to allow that process, right? You know, it's kind of, you know, Jim had mentioned, I think, the last time or, or in subsequent times, that, you know, it would be premature to have, you can't start a conversation with the teachers prior to his announcement of that. And so, some people thought that was hasty, but he needed to put that out there to be able to have that meaningful dialogue. And I think we need to, in, you know, relatively expeditious timeframe, come up with our decision on support for a new direction or not, so that can occur.
Yeah, I guess I, I'd maybe just semantics, well, I think it really is a matter of, do we, are we giving sort of the consensus of our support? And I want to be fair, Erin is not here today, so I don't want to get all the way to the end of this conversation without her being present. I, I certainly support what you're outlining and the continued. I, I certainly support what you're outlining and the continued exploration of, of what the next thing is. So if that wasn't clear from my comments, I certainly want to be clear about that. Whether or not we have to formally vote to take a next step or whether we're, you know, is sort of giving our, our support for that by virtue of our discussion or not, I, to me, it's kind of, I, I'm happy to go on either way. And, and taking that, giving that sort of definitive guidance as to whether we continue down this path or not, that I am comfortable doing in November, as planned.
For me, I think like the timing is, is a big issue. I'll be, I, we actually started, we've been having this conversation for a while. This isn't just like, oh, now we need a plan. You know, over the summer, we spent hours talking about this on two separate days to both administrators in the building, asking all our questions. I see Mr. Adams pretty much every week as chair of the school committee. I've made really clear to him what, you know, the elements that we're all supporting that made all of this so wonderful. I don't think anybody wants them to go anywhere. At least I've, I've out, been, been very clear about like, if I do see a plan, this is what needs to be in it. So these conversations have been ongoing, at least they've been started. But for me, Mark, the timing is, is the issue as far as if we're talking like the real plan, ready to roll out, ready to get it all settled for September, isn't ready till, whatever, April, then it leaves a lot of people hanging for a long time. Parents, students, teachers. And I think it's fair to get, let them be settled one way or the other, knowing what direction we're taking, even if we're not completely ready. So for me, it's the timing. If, if what we need is another month, we're not ready to vote in November, but maybe December, and then we have some kind of regional, reasonable sketch of something that we can feel comfortable enough. But if it's, if we're talking too far into the future, then I worry about being unfair to the people that need to understand what's happening.
Yeah, I think that's, that's absolutely a fair concern. And I'm, I don't know what that timeframe is. You know, and I think there's, there's gonna be an element of this that, that is sort of sketched out and presented to us as this is how we're gonna make it work. And then I'm sure that beyond that, there are gonna be many details that have to be sorted out sort of on an administrative level. And I don't, I feel like it's kind of talking about a construction project and figuring out when you're substantially complete, right? And figuring out like, when, when are we done enough to, to know what we're locking into? And I'm not sure I know how to define that. And I'm happy to continue to have conversation among the committee, among the administrators to figure out sort of how much detail do we want in it? You know, I think there have been a lot of really good, important points raised tonight about transition plans, about a number of things that it's, and I, I can give some thought to try to figure out where I think sort of like the level of detail needs to be. But I honestly have no idea how much time you guys think you need to come up with that or whether it's 90% done now and you just kind of need to sort of dot Is and cross Ts. So, yeah, I, I fully appreciate your point, Laurie, and I think it's an important one. I don't know what deadlines we have in terms of, at some point in time, there's decisions that second grade parents have to make, right? That's relevant, there's, the school building process is ongoing.
So I was gonna mention that. So another factor, although, you know, we should not let the tail wag the dog, obviously, but we do have the, the building project. So if you're not aware, I'm the chair of the school, uh, school building project as well for the Mendez. And as part of the MSBA process, we have an educational plan that will come before this, this committee. And what that educational plan describes is, A, what we're doing, what we want to do. And so, and that impacts what's called the MSBA space template, which essentially drives the square footages of the different programming and what will be included in the project from a reversible standpoint. And, and those two components are, are really the drivers of that process. And if we delay too long, I, I can tell you that, that will delay that project. We need to be able to finalize that educational plan. And, and by that, I mean, understand what the, the needs are gonna be from a square footage perspective and, and things like that. So, so I think that should be also a factor. Again, not, not, if we were totally unsure about, you know, how to move forward and then that shouldn't cause us to make a decision hastily, for sure. But that, that's another factor than, and the, that timeframe is, is gonna be approaching. We're gonna, I believe it's in December, have something in front of this, this committee in December.
Somebody made the point, Paul, and I agree with it, that like a building has to last for decades, right? Decades and decades. And the, the chance of lots of things changing over the years. You know, the enrollment numbers, programming, all kinds of things. So like, doesn't there need to be some kind of flexibility built into it anyway for whatever could come up?
Yes, so we, we could probably talk about this for, for a long time.
Oh, please don't.
Remember our last school committee meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was only the tip of, that was only the tip of the iceberg. We, we had, we had two meetings yesterday.
You're not on the agenda tonight.
We had two meetings yesterday, but.
On purpose.
But, but the, the, the ironic thing is, you know, when we go through the, the visioning sessions with our educational consultant, the word neighborhood is used a lot. And, you know, we, we kind of tell them, that, that's a, that's a loaded term in our district because you're saying neighborhood when you talk about these, these learning communities in these buildings and how you, and, and I've said it here, I've said it before, we're doing it, you, you're, you know, we have a bunch of teachers here, you're all doing an amazing job despite the building right now, right? And here's an opportunity for the building to support you as opposed to be, you know, an obstacle for you. So I, I, you know, and I maybe have a unique perspective on it because I, I sit through all these things with the, with the building committee as well. I see a lot of possibility in incorporating, it, it's tough to see, look, take the building right now and be, see how you can incorporate some of the things that we all like, love about what's going on in these programs in the current building. Because it's just like, oh my God, how in the world would we ever make that work? But when we sit through these visioning sessions, and, and Jim, Jim can, can lay into this as well, and we talk about how we design and layout these buildings and these learning communities or clusters of classrooms and, and, and shared learning spaces and stuff like that, I, I see, through my lens, I see the opportunity to really have an incredible program, singular program that encompasses a lot of what we love about what's going on. So, and, and I want to, I want to share that because that, it, to me, it's not about, you know, picking and choosing, it's about, you know, doing that. And we have, this happens to be going on at the same time and we have some excellent work going on there. And it's exciting because that, what we do out of that, and I encourage everyone to participate in, in, in those sessions. We had a public forum last night as well. The, the building that we're going to have, whether it's a renovated building, whether it's a new building or whatever, is going to be flexible. It's going to, you know, not be so spread out. So regardless, it's gonna be more, you know, closer proximity, more, more community-based than, than the building allows right now. The, the building is not helping, any situation we've talked about tonight, good or bad, the building is not helping us, as, as all the educators know, so.
Can I ask, Laurie, just, I mean, to, it, it feels like we, we certainly, to, for everybody's benefit, to your point, we, we do need to have a date, a target date. You know, what Paul's referring to is, is potentially one sort of benchmark of time. I don't know when that is. And I don't know if there's an opportunity to get clarity on that or you, you already know sort of if there's a hard deadline.
We know the dates, so if we go much past the 13th, it'll be very difficult to meet of November.
You don't need a definitive plan.
You don't need a, we don't need a plan, but we need to understand if, to have, to have very distinct programs and the space needs for that is different, right? And so, and it also, the, the MSBA will want us to describe and have narratives on how we do. So we do need to make a decision on whether we're going to have separate programs or not because that informs that process and, and changes it. And I don't think we can move that process forward with, with, with that lingering.
I, I guess my question would be whether or not there's, there is an ability to submit the educational plan or, am I sure I'm using the right term?
Program.
Program. With sort of the question of there may be, you know, there, there, or the, we're currently looking at kind of provision that could alter things.
We can, but they, they will, when they, when they submit their feedback to us, that they will not like the fact that we, we were not being very clear about what we want to do.
I can let Jim say a few words on that in a minute if you have anything else to say. Rachel, I haven't given you an opportunity to, to, you know, in our summer meetings, Rachel joined us and, and some of the most insightful comments came from you.
Thank you.
So I don't want this meeting to end without giving you an opportunity to weigh in if you have something you'd like to say.
I do. I was a former multi-age student and I can say that those three years were wonderful and I enjoyed my experience. And I have friends who were in both programs. And in talking to them after our meeting last week, we all kind of came to the conclusion that we want the best of both to be brought together for every student because that's important. And I heard from a lot of stu, the students that spoke tonight about how the mentorship is really one of the most important pieces. And I feel the same way coming out of that. It's actually probably the reason I'm so involved in peer leadership this year. And I feel like every student should have that opportunity in some way. And I hope for the upcoming students that there is a building in which they can go and they can get the best of both of these programs and that nobody feels like one's going away and the other's taking over. Because that's not what this is. And I, that's my understanding from sitting through these meetings and listening to everyone speak. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
And just so everyone, she sat through an entire day.
In the summer.
Yeah.
So first student to ever do that, and it was great. And so she heard all the conversation and, and, and as she said, gave a lot of great insights.
And you were on the study group as well.
I was.
So you, you have, you know, you know everything that, that we're talking about pretty closely, yes. Mr. Adams.
I'll be very brief. First of all, thank you to everyone who is here tonight, who's, some have left already. It's, it's a late night. And for those who've sent in emails. And, and I want to emphasize from my lens that I would never, and I don't think my track record here for 11 years, I would never suggest something that I think is harmful to kids or that is not in the best interest of all students in our district. We can agree to disagree, and I, and I totally appreciate that about this community, is that we can have that input and, and respect one another's belief system as well as the educational programming that exists. I, I would say that, to, to everyone's point here, the, the definitive plan, I did a poor job last week of, you know, when I look back at the slides, it was about trying to create dialogue, which I'm glad we're doing and having, and that was the intent. It's about transition, and I think the word phase out was really a poor choice of words on my end, and I apologize for that. But the, the term transition, the transitioning to an opportunity is what I'm really envisioning. A transitioning of programming that does incorporate, as Rachel said, everything that's really good about education, not just what's happening currently in our schools, but what can occur. And that ties back into the potential of a building facility, and those are the conversations we're having. I, I certainly think a plan, and, and Mike mentioned this tonight, it would have been disingenuous for me to come here with a specific plan for you to say, this is what we're doing. To me, that would have been something that I never would have done. I've never done that in the past. I've always been inclusive of adding and asking for input from teaching staff, community members, et cetera. That's just how I work. But you have to start the dialogue by saying, this is something I'm recommending that we transition away from our current model to something better, and I need input. We need input. That has to occur. And yes, Mike, Claudia and I, we've sat in a room and we can show you the spreadsheets of what something might look like, how to transition away from what we currently have. I don't like it, and I wouldn't present it because, one, it didn't have any feedback from staff. And, and that's really critically important to me. So to your point, Mr. Terry, there are these, these tracks, right? We've got the MSBA project. And again, I want to be clear, and I, you know, you asked that question last week. Would I be recommending a transition away from what we currently have even if we didn't have a building project? The answer is yes. The answer is absolutely yes. I think we can do better. I believe we can do better, and I know we'll do better. But that being said, we do have time constraints on, on a few things. Claudia refreshed me, it was February typically is when we are having the conversation about the types of model where students would be moving into the single grade or the multi-grade programs. That's typically when we're having those conversations, right? So, so in terms of flexibility, do we write a program for the MSBA with, with caveats and let them just sort of send it back to us and say, we are still working through a program, a potential program? I don't see any harm in that until I send it and the educational consultant says, Jim, no, we actually need you to have, but that's something Mike and I have to have next Monday? November 5th, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
The, the initial draft. So, so, so that being said, it's really just, it's a draft. It's nothing that's concrete, it's nothing that we're committed to. It's, because that whole plan.
It's an internal, right? It's a, it's an internal.
So I want to be clear, the educational program has to come before the school committee to get approval anyway. That's part of the process before it goes to the MSBA. So what I'm suggesting is we do have some time in there to incorporate and get feedback from the constituents within the schools, which is that February timeframe, you know, is sort of, I, I think it's, that gives flexibility.
Mr. Adams, options are scheduled for February 25th.
Okay, so the end of February, right? So we've got, we've got a little bit of time on that end. But I, but I want to be clear. I, I think quite often when we make recommendations or suggestions and they can be met, you know, with a lot of, you know, negative, negative feedback and/or, and some, some, you know, only three, I guess, right? Constructive feedback. But again, I think that silent voice sometimes isn't heard that are, that are out there. But know as a community that I'm, would never, ever make a recommendation that I didn't think was beneficial to all kids. And I, I just want to be really clear with that. It's not about choosing a program over another program. It's about trying to find a way to create the best program. And that may include some of the really powerful things that are happening in the multi-age and some of the things that I've seen in the past six years as superintendent that have started to occur in the single grade and blending and with opportunity. That's, that's what I'm hoping exists, so, and, you know, and I have, I do have some insight in terms of the, the multi-grade. My kids were Montessori kids. I have an idea of what that means to a lot of people. And so I, I get it. I get it from the educational component as well, so. Thank you, it's, it's all I have and we'll get to the rest of the agenda.
So, thank you, everybody. Anybody who doesn't want to hear about the superintendent's goals or what we're doing at the conference next week is free to go.
I will, you know what, one more thing. I will send an email out either tonight or tomorrow with the link to all of the emails that have been sent in because then you can read them in totality if you'd like. They're there, I've already posted them. But we have had four or five come in since we've been sitting here. And you will have opportunities to, to read all of those because I, I want to really recognize the folks that took the time to send that in to our school committee, so.
Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You did get one of the, I did email these to everyone? Are we back to nobody? Anyone wants to know about the field trip, Jen, please?
Gee, they look just like the ones at home.
So, what you have before you is, Rachel, do you have a copy?
I guess.
Okay. Is the only goal that I added, which we talked about last week, was to add a communication that I, I wanted to, to take a run at the communication goal. And hopefully I captured it. It's 2020, I missed a, instead of 2010, 2020, looks like I had a typo there. So, you know, if you have feedback on that or if, you know, you're good with this, then, you know, I certainly. I no, that one I just gave you, you have it there?
He added a communication goal.
Yeah, I I did email. Okay, didn't get passed down. But I but I also did email it out. Give, yeah, please give one to Rachel. I did email it out as well ahead of time.
And I had seen it.
Yeah, so all this is is just all of them combined.
I I saw one thing, I just, I was the question in there.
Please.
I thought it was it was perfect. Um, the one question I have is the first line of this additional goal says we improve the quantity and quality.
Yeah.
Quantity was intentional there, like you're trying to do more, you're trying to do less.
No, yeah, it's actually less. Um, I I the quantity meaning.
Improve the quantity.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, no, it's it's a fair um, fair question. I I think part of the dialogue we're having within the administrative team is we shouldn't, if we send an email out on a Friday, we should not be following up with a Saturday and a Sunday to clarify, like be better at the, improve the quantity, number, but also the quality that exists within the.
Say more and fewer emails.
Well, yeah, um, but the quantity could also include such as a topic like this. I think I had six emails from October one through tonight, um, that quantity can go up based on the topic, right? And quantity can go down based on the topic as well.
So you're trying to find that sweet spot.
Always trying to find a sweet spot. Uh, and the quality, Dr. Vera had asked me, said, Jim, how are you going to measure that? You know, and I said, well, part of it is we've we've had surveys the last couple of years to review the communication. I will send that survey out again at the end of the year to see if we've improved upon the quality of the email. People are reading them. I've already gotten tremendous feedback on the new format I'm using, um, with the flyers embedded uh, into the the email. So I know that's working and so that'll be a nice thing to have as part of the um, feedback, but.
Yeah, no, I'm so I'm I'm glad you added that. I think it's good and I like about the new website too.
Yeah, so so that's, you know, we're in the process of of working through that.
Yes.
And that, again, that all came out of the original um, survey from last year. So I think it's important to continue that that dialogue, so. But if you approve these, then I will get them posted appropriately and um.
Do we have a motion or do we have more questions?
You want anything? Rachel, do you want me to approve upon anything?
Did they trickle down to you, so?
Do you read the emails, Rachel?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I do.
And you can have them in different languages now. Just click a button.
Well, I'll move to approve the superintendent's goals for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Moving down to approval of new positions.
And Pete and uh, Mike just left, but uh, so we've had a couple of students.
They only the positions, right?
Yeah, so um, we've had a couple of students move in to the to the community with their IEPs needing um, specific ESPs. We do have the funding uh, and from savings throughout some of the hirings, et cetera. So move to approve the, looking for a motion to approve the funding for the one ESP at Warren and one at the Mindas School for the remainder of the year.
I'm good. Okay. Um, I'll move to approve funding for one new ESP position at Warren and one new ESP position at Mindas School for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the next thing on your agenda is the AHS Model United Nations Club to Toronto. Uh, last year, um, this is the group that went out to California, uh, and trying to find appropriate pricing, timing, et cetera.
Right, they had the whole thing all pulled together, charts and.
Yeah, and they would have been here tonight. But.
Yeah.
But the president is in India for a wedding.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
That's okay.
I thought they had presented all their trips. Is this an addition or they didn't have this, they didn't have the detail on this?
No, they didn't have the details. So we did approve in general and they just said, and I just said, when you have it determined where you're actually going. Because originally they thought about going to New York City and they thought, so it ended up being.
Okay.
It's the most cost-effective um, process.
They actually asked asked me to chaperone this trip.
Oh, did they?
Which I can't do because I'm going to be away, but I am going with them on for other of their um, events.
Nice, that's awesome.
She's a she.
Wow.
She especially travels.
Yeah, this is like Lowell, you know, Boston, you know, these are all local, the other ones. I would have, I would have loved to be able to go to Toronto, but I was already like traveling. But I I the rest of the time I'm like, I'm available.
So they just need to finalize all the planning, uh, so just looking for approval.
Who's got a motion?
Move to approve the student travel request from AHS Model United Nations Club to travel to Toronto, Ontario, Canada, April twenty first to the twenty fifth, twenty twenty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Jim, I just have a quick question about it.
Yeah.
What was their reason for needing to have arrival and departure times at three o'clock in the morning?
It's very cheaper.
Well, there's probably nobody here that's going to be able to answer that question, but you know.
It's probably a long day though, right?
You know, I do know that they're going to have excellent chaperones. I know who's going. Ms. Shields and Ms. Sankar. So I'm sure that, you know, they will be well, well cared for.
My guess is it's a ten to twelve hour trip from Boston to Toronto, so if you're leaving at three.
It's a bus, it's not.
So you're going to get there at twelve?
Yeah.
So they're just getting there at a specific time so they can participate in the conference, not waste the day.
Yeah, but they'll be safe because they're in good hands.
And I just got a text from Ms. Sankar wanting me to remind everyone that both Ms. Sankar and Ms. Shields were also asked to chaperone.
I said that, did I not just say?
She just did, she just did.
Because I was reading the text.
And are they, are they going?
I think so, yeah.
Yes, they are. Yeah, that's why I'm saying they're in good hands and, you know.
Anytime you can go to Toronto, you should.
And I've never been.
It's a beautiful city, absolutely. It sure is.
Next to you guys.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
So this MASC, I I did try to spend some time making.
Well, I left my notes at home.
Write down the motion to approve, Mark. I mean, sorry.
Oh.
Do we know when it, when this?
Yeah, we do. I have.
It doesn't matter, you're you're nominated.
It's, I think.
No, you're doing it.
I'll tell you the second one. I have, I have the conference folder right here.
I think they moved it last year to Friday.
I was gonna ask and say, I thought it was Friday last year, which is.
It's a long bus trip. We want to get there in time.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Yeah.
And there'll be no Ms. Sankar or someone is watching us from home tonight.
Hi, friends.
Where do we see the? It's usually right in the middle of the day, right?
I think it might be Friday morning. It used to be Wednesday afternoon.
So that that'll determine who can.
Yeah, I mean, I tend to.
I I don't think I'll still, I mean, I'm going to be leaving early Friday morning is my plan.
My expectation is I'll be there for the day on Friday, so I'm I'm doing it. Um, I just have no idea what they're competing.
Yeah.
There's a general session Friday at ten thirty, from ten thirty to eleven forty-five is the general session.
For for this?
For the delegate assembly? See, it doesn't say.
But that, but thanks for letting us know.
When's the delegate?
Delegate re- res- um, registration is Friday at two P M.
So it must be three on Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
I'll I'll stay until I leave.
Yep, is that?
Assembly's at three fifteen.
Three fifteen.
Three fifteen to four o'clock.
Okay.
On Friday.
Thank you. You already got to download the app?
Yeah.
Is that last year or something?
Yeah, it goes on until people.
Yeah, it goes through Saturday.
All right, so do we want to um, appoint him and then just talk about it or?
Yeah, no, talk about about it first and then we'll appoint him with the authority to, so. Yeah, well, how are you feeling about banning Polly's diary from school?
Well, I think, to me, there were just, there's some, it felt like there were a couple of things in here that were just. See what I wrote? Like way out there in terms of, like, is this what we want to focus our energy on and and whatever?
Right, or even that one, is there now a cost to us to replace, I mean, I I don't even know if we're using it and if we are, what kind of effort we need to make to.
Well, they.
I mean, I would say just sit out, sit that one out or say no. I don't understand enough about how it's affecting our district.
Yeah, the the most of my, I feel are like that, like while I can agree with most of the things in resolution four about climate change.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a pretty much a stretch for us to say that school committee should be weighing in on that too much, you know?
Yeah, I'm part of my thought on some of these, and I want to go too far out of order, but there was one on poverty in children, right?
Yeah.
Which is, you know, they're they're looking for advocacy around elimination of poverty. I, who who can disagree with that?
Right.
But that's such a lar- it's a way beyond a school issue. And while I might be okay with the MASC weighing in or supporting efforts in that regard, it's not necessarily something that I think the MASC ought to be thinking as one of its core missions and on an advocacy agenda. Because I think we've got a lot of other stuff to worry about that really directly impacts schools. And and more specifically, I think we ought to kind of stay within our lane a little bit.
Yeah.
And that's sort of how I felt about the Polly's staff, siring from schools. Okay, and like, you know what, great idea. If we think it's a great idea, we should do it. If Framingham thinks it's not a great idea, well, then they don't have to.
Right.
But why should we pass a resolution for it's trying to take away local control, right?
For everybody.
Yeah. Yeah, for for me, it it uh, like the deprive poverty one, changing like one word in there would be great. Instead of the eradication of poverty, education of those in poverty, you know, it's like then you're, then it's a, then it's a focus, then it's, then you put a point on it. You know, we want them to support legislation that helps, you know, close educate achievement gaps and helps to educate and and uh, the the, you know, the those those impoverished people. That 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 would be something we could, we could say, yes, that's actionable by MASC.
So why don't, why don't we? Why don't we go through in order because I I started jumping around, I got you off track.
All right, so we did that. The next one.
So why don't we, number one is, it sounds like we're vote no.
Yeah, for me.
Okay, so.
But because, I mean, I I, even though we might think it's a good idea, but.
Yeah.
But I see your point though, as a school committee, we're not, not.
I I just, I don't think we should be looking for the state or federal governments to put more restrictions on school committees. I think these are great policies and if we want to revisit them as a policy of our school committee, we should do that. But I don't want Silver Lake telling us.
And if the rationale had more information, like what is the impact of this, right? What is the alternative? What, you know, it's, hey, don't do this, hey, fifty percent of schools aren't doing this already. You know, there's an obvious other choice and it's this and it's, you know, doesn't adversely impact the budgets and everything like that. Not that, you know, I'm trying to weigh budgets versus the environmental impacts, but, you know, it it's like me approaching you about something and not giving you any information to make an educated decision on it, right? Unless we already knew enough about this topic to say, yeah, you don't, don't use that, use this. And it's comparable in any way, shape and form, you know, I don't know what the impact of 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 that is.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, let's move on. Next one. Should we eliminate the MTLS?
Are we on number two?
Wait, pertaining to.
Isn't that two?
Resolution two.
Yeah, that's two.
So I'm curious what you think on this.
Oh, oh, L, okay, I'm just reading the title.
Yeah, yeah. If we eliminate MTL and the other one, then we can get more diversity because then people wouldn't have to pass those tests.
I wrote yes.
Is, what what value is the MTL to us and?
Yeah, but but you, but the teachers have to pass it to be able to teach.
Right, so so when we're talking about.
For licensure.
Yeah, yeah.
So so for me, I I don't look, I mean, the MTLS, is there a baseline in terms of knowledge that you're supposed to have to be an educator? The answer is yes, right? It's a profession. That being said, what what this is talking about, which we struggle with as well, is when we're trying to find a more diverse teaching staff to come into our buildings, uh, from an outside, maybe someone who's not in education or went through education. We go to Framingham State and there's a diverse group of teaching, you know, teachers who could come into the profession, but are struggling with certain pieces, maybe they're Portuguese speaking and they're struggling with the English piece of the MTL. Not necessarily the content piece, if they're teaching Portuguese or if they're teaching Spanish. So there it, it's impacting their ability to get into the profession and limiting the number of of folks.
My daughter just took them.
I I have a question about that.
Yeah.
If they're struggling with the English portion of it.
And they're teaching Spanish.
How are they, how are they going to be able to be, you know, if if.
They could be a fantastic Spanish teacher, teaching Spanish.
So, for Spanish, but.
Well, that's just one example. Becca actually just took them and she passed them all.
Right, but 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 I'm saying, you know, if 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 language, and you're a lang- and you're a language teacher, I get it.
Right.
But you 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 found an edge case, right? Not the, you know.
You're just, you're challenging his example. The bigger question is, because Becca just took it, she passed, but she said that especially the last one had nothing to do with anything, that she learned or that she would ever teach as a second grade teacher. It's just a hoop that she had to pass and she passed, but she said you would not believe, from her point of view. So the the thing is, is that if as a state, we didn't require this, it's just like if we didn't have to take the SATs to get into college.
I think that's the exact point. You look at a lot of schools that are going SAT optional, you have a lot of kids who have three point five, three point sevens in their G for GPAs, but are getting a nine hundred on their SATs. Colleges are recognizing the fact and allowing um, for kids to choose whether or not they submit their SATs because they're doing great in school, but they can't take that standardized test.
Right.
And so the same, the the mass, uh, mass PAL, it's, that's a the first therefore clause.
Yeah, yep.
Says, but we don't think these have any value whatsoever in terms of.
Listen, I I've met, I always say this delicately, I I'm not a delicate guy. I've met many who have passed the MTL, it does not make them qualified teachers.
Okay, but what about the other one?
And the reverse is also true.
And I've met some.
Yeah, who can't pass, but you you see something in them that you wish that you could hire them, but they they.
I don't think it's necessarily a a great barometer of determining whether or not someone's going to be an educator, a quality educator.
The question I was going to have for you is, that can be the case, right? But it doesn't necessarily prove what they're trying to say, that it's really an inhibitor either, right? Because, you know, i- i- if you're saying, hey, do my profession, I need to be able to stand on one foot for three seconds. Has nothing to do with it, but it's not prohibiting me from 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 doing that, right? But they're claiming that it's financially aburded, it's all these other things and it's like, well, is it?
It is for some.
It's a hundred dollars a test.
Yeah.
It is financially aburden for some, for sure, for inner city kids, for, absolutely.
Right, well, and some people have to, a friend of mine's daughter has been taking the same test for like three years.
Well, those are, right, there's no waiver to it.
Anyhow, let's just decide how we want to.
There there is a second part to this, which is also that the um, they want the governance and licensure professional educators to be vested in a board comprised of licensed educators too. Which makes perfect sense to me.
Right.
I don't know who is, who's on it now. Um, if, but, the the one thing I would think about is if the Mass Teachers Association gets a hand on another state entity and populates with people that are just going to, you know, water it down, that would concern me. Right, um, so I don't know what this looks like.
So the licensure department, Department of Ed, um, is not made up of current educators. It's it's a bureaucratic position, you know, and they have an, I I actually had lunch with them probably a month ago. And the attorney for the licensure and they're not educators.
Right. Well, they may be overreaching, but I guess in principle it makes sense.
You guys agree?
I'm fine supporting it.
So let's support it.
Okay.
You know, I I just.
Do I think there needs to be some level of qualifications? Absolutely.
Right.
But I don't think the test determines that.
I, yeah, and and I don't doubt that, I just don't know that the 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 reasons are any more valid than the test is as well, right?
Right, yeah.
I, so I guess I waffle and I'm like, I don't really care, I I'll support it if if the people with the educated opinion on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel the same way. So the third one on transportation, you know, creating a working group that will advise them on uh, great, how to get greater competition. I said yes to that.
I did too.
So did I.
Yeah, so that's, let's just say.
I don't know why, I, that there doesn't seem to be a point for that.
All right, four, climate change, you know.
That would have been funny an hour and a half ago, Paul.
Yeah, I know.
Funding for disaster relief as a result of all the issues with climate change, I mean.
There's climate change?
Extreme weather events.
Like you said, I I don't even understand what, you know, are we, are we that bored? Are there, are there no education-specific things we can revolve or?
Big news, doesn't exist.
So this is basically, we need to solve world hunger and climate, climate, that that's school committee related stuff.
Right.
It boggles my mind.
How about I just stand up now and call for Congress, take swift and effective action, be done with it?
Could you?
Very, fair enough.
That'll be just as effective, Mark.
Yeah, this is my point.
All right, just say yes. Transportation costs for students in foster care.
Were we just saying yes to that?
We were just saying yes or no?
No, no, just say no.
Just say no to resolution four.
Full funding.
Full funding.
Let's get our signs out.
For students and transportation costs for students in foster care and state care.
I say yes.
Sure.
I would absolutely say yes.
If we made a note, where, yes, but something, but taken, I don't know. I'll make it up when I get there, you guys won't know anything.
All right.
This is a yes, but for me.
Universal yes, I said yes. Universal yes, I said yes to that.
I said, I said yes, but.
But what?
Um, so Vermont just did this six years ago. Um, said that each community needs to enact a universal pre-K for all their districts. First of all, they had no space in their buildings, uh there was no funding for it, um but yet you had to enact it.
Right, yeah.
So, the but is, it it it, there better be funding, and 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 not only funding for the actual, you need funding for the facility and the teachers and the educators that have to come through, that's all.
Absolutely.
That's all, because we're talking about, we get funding through chapter seventy with the pre-K that were required by law
Yeah.
to educate, but not the other students, right?
Yeah, there is a uh pre-K law in the books, which I actually just stumbled across this week, but no money for it.
Right.
Nothing happens.
Yeah, but it it's always subject to appropriation.
Right, it's a subject to appropriation.
They haven't appropriated. Uh, number seven, that's the the big poverty, I was gonna say no to that one.
Nope.
Everything I said.
Resolution, uh, resolution to excess.
I I I agree with eradicating world hunger and poverty, but, you know.
I will note that for the record.
Supplies, I said yes to that, I mean, you know, whatever, if you give toilet paper, why not throw a couple of other supplies in there? Right?
Sure, it goes it goes back to equity, right?
Right.
I'm leaving this one alone.
I I obviously don't have an informed opinion on this.
I say yes, yes, yeah, Rachel says yes.
Rachel says yes.
I I I mean, to me, to me, the only part that 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 seems overreaching is like, okay.
Why we provide toilet paper, you're in the shower and you need it, you need it.
They can't afford to have it and.
At the high school, we can go in the nurse's office, any any anytime, yeah.
Right, right, so so they has nurses, but it also has bathrooms, I'm like, oh, hold on a second, you know, making sure that somebody has access to things, especially if they, you know, can't afford it, absolutely. How detailed and overreaching it needs to be, like, hey, guess what, you're non-compliant, because your dispenser's been empty for two days, or, you know, I don't want.
I, yeah, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, I just.
If you really wanna get into the weeds, she could say, nurse and restroom, and locker room.
So, so.
In in principle, I agree with it.
Yeah, in principle, but they start to, you know, get down the weeds pretty much.
Eight. Oh, that was eight, nine.
Charter school reform?
Yeah.
Oh, nine, charter school reform.
So, I'm recusing our myself from this discussion, because I represent a couple of charter schools as clients, so I'm not.
I did say yes.
I, no, I'll speak, I'll speak on behalf of the committee, but I'm just not gonna participate in the decision meeting.
I think on behalf of the the public school committee, we probably would wanna say yes to this, right? Any funding that that goes out from the public system is not beneficial to us, is my understanding.
Yeah, I I think in general, this one was a yes for me.
Yeah.
All right.
So, why don't I make a motion?
Please.
So, um, I move that the school committee take the following positions at the MASC delegate assembly regarding the proposed resolutions as follows. Resolution one, no, resolution two, yes, resolution three, yes, resolution four, no, resolution five, yes, resolution six, yes, resolution seven, no, resolution eight, yes, resolution nine, yes.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And then, did we appoint you?
You have not appointed me.
Okay.
I made a motion.
You wanna make that motion?
I will make that motion, I move to appoint Mark Terry as the voting delegate at the twenty nineteen MASC, MAS D joint conference.
MAS D?
Says MAS D.
MAS S, no.
MAS S, MAS.
Massachusetts Association of. Let me change my motion. Do I have to say the whole thing?
No.
No, you're good. Who's who's got the second?
I said second.
All in favor? All right, excellent. Um, Jim, do you have anything else to add by way of report?
Uh, just one thing, um, I take an hour, no. No, uh, we, you know, um, about a month and a half ago, maybe a little more.
A month and a half ago.
Um, we're, a couple of weeks ago, we were fortunate to have the Commissioner of Education come uh speak to to our students at at National High School. And it was great, you know, he spent a little bit of.
Twenty bucks.
Yeah, he gave out twenty bucks, um, he spent a little bit of time with us, but um, the really exciting piece is um, we we didn't, Paul and Jen Cutler invited him to participate in an SEL online Zoom session where there were five of us.
Yeah.
But what happened through that conversation of the invitation is now, um, I'll be giving up my um time to speak at graduation, because the Commissioner's gonna come and speak at our graduation this year.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's really cool, it's exciting, and, but it started with through the process of inviting him to the SEL um discussions on on Zoom, and his um coordinator of events was like, ah, maybe graduation. So, we sent him the information, and I just confirmed on Friday of last week.
He was a good speaker.
Yeah.
I thought it was a win, he said, I apologize, I can't attend your Zoom session, how about I come to speak at your graduation? Had to read it three or four times to make sure I wasn't, so that's a win.
Yeah, he does, he knows the date, we gave him all the information.
So invite him to lunch a couple more times, you know, have to decline, but then give you other dates.
That's all I got.
Assistant Superintendent's report?
Yeah, just two brief things. Um, first one is that we are finishing up next week our first round of professional development with our literacy program. Claire is coming in to meet with um the Mindes staff on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. And then on Friday, we're going to be doing some purchasing of books at the Professional Development Day, uh based off of her recommendations and an inventory teachers did, so after we do that first round, I'll come back and report to the committee and the community as to um what we did. Second thing just goes back to the conversation we had earlier today, and two words keep resonating from the presentations, and that's passion and love. I think we heard it from the teachers, I think we heard it from the kids and the parents, but we also heard it from Mike, from the committee, and from Kathy. And um, that keeps resonating with me, the passion and love for the program, for the kids. Um, I listened to it, and I wish my kids had had some of those um opportunities. But the third word that keeps coming up is opportunity, and I think we have an awesome once every two or three decade opportunity to create and shape something new for the kids. And I listened to the awesome benefits, and we all did, of the neighborhood program, but we also listened to the awesome benefits of the single age program. And there are also some awesome other programs and benefits that we haven't even thought of. So, I'm really excited about the opportunity we have going forward to shape a new Mindes, and then potentially move into either a new or renovated Mindes building. So, um, I know it's a scary time, but I see this as a great opportunity for the uh kids, the teachers, and the community. I just want to.
Thanks, Paul, I I see it this, I think we all probably see it the same way, and are hoping for something, you know, and again, linking it back to our mission and our, our mission, our mission and our vision, that, you know, where we are a forward-thinking district, and we we that we were innovative with that program to begin with, and have the next like iteration of whatever is going on, also be something that we can be really proud of, but that also addresses some of the other concerns, like the equity and everything, if we could do amazing things. You know, if we really put our heads together.
And and to piggyback off something Jim said earlier, I was gonna mention, you know, you you'd mentioned what we said last time about, hey, would we be talking, having this conversation regardless of building project? Yes.
Yes.
Would we be limited in what we could possibly do if the project wasn't there? Yes. The the fact that these two things are happening simultaneously pretty much lifts those those shackles, if you will, it it says
That's a great point.
There's there's no bounds now, we're not bound by this long stretched out, non ADA compliant behemoth thing.
Dinosaur.
Right.
You know, that doesn't, you know, where, hey, you know, we we all know, Mike is has, from his scheduling and placing students, has had to think about, well, how reliable is that lift, right? And placing a student in, okay, well, I can't place them there, because then they would have to use that lift three times a day, as opposed to if I put them over here.
And then, and the ramp too.
Right, the everything about that, and so, to me, the fact that they're happening at the same time gives us, that that word opportunity is is so key to that, is now we're not bound.
Right.
Uh, our our conversations about, the the rich dialogue that I hope occurs um between the educators and the administration, and we're educators as well, obviously, but, you know, that can be so much richer and boundless, right? Uh, in the visioning sessions you guys have seen, that's what our educational consultants are talking about, blue skies. So, don't don't have the boundaries of what you're you're experiencing, and and the fact that they're happening at the same time would is is key.
You know, I I'm sure you've got um, you know, the the those this the pictures that we were looking at yesterday, the different kind of design features that that we all had the opportunity to talk about. Um, and I'm guessing that stuff is up on the website and all that.
It's already up there.
It would be maybe beneficial, and you can talk with Jim about it when he comes back offline, but to circulate some of those images, you know, just in the email.
Yeah, they will, they will ta- take those out and and and, you know, and I.
That's that's when people start to get excited, when they see that stuff.
And and that's why I kind of brought it up in that, and to the to the group is, you know, I've seen it, you've seen it, some of you have seen it, seen it a million times, and without, with, when I see it, and I, and we have this conversation, I'm seeing it through that lens as well, and I I see opportunity, but, but
Yeah, thank you for that.
In that building every day, and the building is a hindrance. And you're not seeing these conversations about what we're talking about with uh a facility that would support and complement and expand what we can do, then I only see, his recommendation is even more intimidating, scary, and, you know, somewhat impossible, right? You know, it would be a much more difficult conversation if we didn't potentially have this opportunity to say, hey, listen, you're not bound, okay, yeah, that's a great idea, but, we can get rid of that but. And say, how does that inform, that is an awesome idea, and, you know, from last night, we we and I think the weather kind of, you know, limited maybe some of the uh, some of the the community from coming out last night. But it's still valuable, if we walk away with one thing, and I think we did, right? Uh, you know, we walked away with multiple things, but, you know, one of the, one of the community members brought up something about the nurse's office that happens in in some pediatricians' offices and stuff like that, and happens in actually in some, you know, um, vets and things like that, that, you know, to have uh the design incorporate uh separation for uh, you know, tho- those are the sick cases and 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 well visits or or other visits, uh, you know, and so, that just, that's an example of why a plan that that Mike and Jim come together, that would be awesome, but, you know, one of those people sitting out there in involved in that conversation is gonna bring something amazing to it, uh, and, you know, and and that's so key. And and having that that other project be able to open those possibilities is is really awesome.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have any um warrant approvals? Okay, um, what about the minutes? Anyone have anything on the October twenty third, twenty nineteen?
I will be honest, I have not had a chance to to look at them, so if we don't need to uh approve this, I I haven't, I haven't looked at them, and you said you you put a lot of the stuff that I was talking about in there, so if.
You're thinking that you need to sometime to take a look.
You know, especially if it if it if it relates back to the other project, I wanna make sure that they're accurate.
I did have one.
Although I'm sure they are, because you do take awesome minutes, but.
Well, Kathy, you can put your input in now, and then we can not vote on it till next time, if Paul wants.
And he can get a mark, I think, under, well, he didn't look at it, did you, so under the
We're not gonna vote.
The Mindes Educational Programming, that whole section about that recommendation. Oh, page three, that whole paragraph, recommendation from Superintendent for Future Programming. Um, at the end of that whole conversation, though, I thought I thought it should be put in there that we, I think we kind of charged Jim and Mike to come up, to come up with a plan for the next meeting, even though they decided not to do a plan, but we talked about that, I thought.
I think the, um, somebody posed the question about the transition plan.
Yeah.
And I think what Jim said at the time was, he would, um, he would have a transition plan for Monday. And I will say, I, I want to get into the discussion afterwards, but what, he said, that's what, that was what the extent of the discussion was, by my recollection. Um, but it was focused on the transition plan, which I understood at that time, for whatever that's right. Um, as being sort of what happens with the students who are in the program now, as the program lines down.
Yeah.
I think that was the extent of the discussion.
Yeah, that that's all, I just thought there should, I thought there should be a line in there, because it was.
That should definitely be in there, and subsequently, you know, he communicated that he thinks it's premature, uh, and and.
Well, that wouldn't go in the minutes, so, yeah, 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 okay.
So, but I I think that should be in there, even 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 though, e- e- even though it wasn't delivered for the reasons that.
That's fine, and but we'll 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 hold a vote on that till next time, so Paul can look at his piece. Gifts and donations?
Mr. V R for practicing, so I'll let him do it.
There's a repeat of Ash Pack meeting, Ash Pack, sorry.
We have three gifts and donations tonight, the first one's from Corey McGann, from the Institute for Cultural Exchange for one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, it's the EF tour bonus check for future field trips at Ashland High School. Planet Aid in the amount of seven hundred thirty dollars and sixty-six cents, gifts and donations to the Ashland Public Schools, and from Paul and Paula Pepper, fifty dollars for the Ashland Public Schools helping our own fund.
Excellent, do we have a motion to accept the gifts and donations?
So moved.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, all right, we're to member updates, Rachel?
Can we do anything, Maggie?
Do anything past week?
What have you done since last week?
Just been very busy.
Read a lot of, read a lot of emails.
There's, yes, there's been a lot of schoolwork recently, that's okay.
It's okay.
The fall, yeah.
It is, yeah, and especially right now, because the end of the term is next week.
Oh.
So, yeah, everything's kind of getting crammed in, um, and other than that, looking forward to the Halloween Parade tomorrow.
Oh, fine.
Fun, yeah.
Are you dressing up?
Um, we were supposed to, but I think we have a friend who's gonna be out sick, so we don't know what we're gonna do yet. Yeah, um, but we'll see.
So, will you tell us what you were going to dress up as?
Lilo and Stitch. We're gonna do, yeah.
So, you kind of need the other pair, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which one are you gonna be?
Um, I was supposed to be the alien, and then we had, um, two of my best friends, it was Lilo and Stitch, and then my other best friend as the sister, I think.
Oh, cute, yeah. Oh, I know where you were last night.
That sounds.
And we're gonna tell Trish.
Good thing nobody watches these meetings, uh.
Yeah.
They've all signed off as well.
Um, yeah, so since last week, uh, obviously, we had we had the the forum last night, and as I mentioned, I I we, I would have loved to have more community input, we definitely appreciated the the people that did come out, we had some valuable input. Um, you know, like I said, it's 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 very, it's valuable if we walk away with one thing, we probably walked away with multiple things, but, you know, there's notable things that we all remember from the meeting, so, um, uh, you know, so that's great. Um, trying to think if there was anything else, um, uh, I'm sure there was, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a blur, but.
Yeah, we were, I was at the visioning forum last night, so, yeah, it was good.
Yeah, I was there as well, and it was just kind of exciting to see some of the, start to see what could be.
Yeah.
Good.
Just to see some images and um to see how people reacted to some of those images, how I reacted to some of those.
I I like the script that we're working with too, how they're bringing everything together, and they write it all down, and then they bring it back.
Our our educational consultant's, you know, very good, and I I'm really happy with how he's leading the uh, leading that stuff.
Excellent, I I don't have anything to add. Um, action items, same.
So, just a quick question for the group, though. Let me know if there's a point at which you would like uh the project team to come, and, you know, there's certainly gonna be points where the educational, uh, you know, plan and stuff like that is gonna come before here. Uh, but if there's a, if there's a point in which you think that um it's valuable to have them come and present, uh, whether it be, we can, we can have the educational consultant come um and present some of the things that we've been talking about. Um, have it be on camera, I mean, people see it, but it's, it work, you know, just everybody knows, it wasn't televised, but a workshop's tough to televise, because there's a lot of uh small group work going on, so, um, so if you think that's valuable, we can certainly schedule that, um, you know, and, you know, I'll I'll reach out as well to um, Yolanda and Michael, to see if they think the same for uh the select board as well.
Okay.
Um, the more we can get this stuff out there, uh, because, exactly, a- as as we had this discussion, and I'm thinking, you know, when I sat back and said, wait, hold on a second, not everybody's seen all the stuff that I've seen around that, and so.